Good evening. We will open up the planning board meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, now I have to pick up my agenda. So we have a continuance of a public hearing tonight, so I will advise everyone in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. So we have called to order. We are permanently missing one member right now, and we are missing a second member tonight. Paula is not with us. We have quorum though, so we're going at it. Is there any public comment not to do with the hearing tonight? Okay. Our first agenda item is Architectural Preservation District Commission, Discussion of the Brooks House.
I don't see members of the commission, so you may want to hold that until later.
So we'll push that off. Then we'll move to our public hearing. A continuance of the public hearing for Unitil, continued from 8:12.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. We have been before the board before, so I'll just give a little recap. We've come in multiple times talking about a program to remove trees and do some overhead pruning around the overhead electric wires in order to improve service reliability. So we've had a number of discussions here, and then on the 17th last week, we had a field visit where we were able to look at some trees. And so today, we are proposing a couple of options to help facilitate doing vegetation management work around the power lines. So we have heard the concerns of the town about making sure we find the right fit for removal, so we wanted to give an option of a pick list of choices. Unitil's preferred choice for the program would to be remove 16 trees, which includes 13 that were talked about on the sidewalk that we came to mostly an agreement on that, and then three additional trees that we believe warrant removal. So that would be our preferred choice. Second choice would be to approve the trees as discussed on the field sidewalk. And the third would be to, you know, go through and make any changes and remove any trees that you have decided that you would not like to have removed. We'd also just like a decision on the pruning. So we have a couple of options for pruning. One is a ground-to-sky pruning, which is completely clear above the wires, 10 feet to the side of the conductor. And then we have a normal pruning option, which is what we normally come through with our clearance is 10 feet of the side and 15 feet of overhead. Or there's a choice of other where you can write down what fits best on your road. So we're hoping that this helps with some of the concern. Obviously, we're proposing it for reliability, but, you know, if you decide to do a different combination than what we are proposing, we would be willing to do all of those trees and find a way to get that done. We just want to make sure that we can remove those trees that we all agree on and at least get some benefit from it.
Sounds good. So I was, I joined you guys on the Board of Selectmen's sidewalk. The 16 trees, did you say?
Correct, yeah. The note that I had sent out says 15, but I was corrected that I can't add, apparently. And it's, if you add up all the ones listed that say remove, it actually adds to 16 and 13.
Now, I guess a question for someone. Is there a list of the trees that the tree warden and his consultant agreed with removing versus did not agree with removing?
Yes, so that's what was just sent out today. So it lists all of the tree numbers.
Okay.
It looks like this with a yellow column.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so the note, right next to the priority is where the column used to end. That was what was submitted in our packet. So I added the column for John's walk notes, and so that's what he had documented from the walk. And then the next column is our proposal, and it includes proposing to do what we had noted as the conclusion on the sidewalk. And that's what's in the parentheses. And the ones with the stars there are the ones that we would like to still recommend removal even though on the sidewalk, we were, you know, leaning towards pruning. So there's three of those that we would still like to recommend removal. Obviously, you can choose whatever works best.
Norway maple, hemlock, maple. All right, what do we have for?
And each one of these does have a tree ID tag now. That was after our last meeting, so we should have seen that on the sidewalk. But just for anyone who hasn't seen that update, each tree is individually tagged with a number, so we know, you know, which ones say removal. They're not confused with anything. They each have an individual number.
So it looks like the orange is where you disagree. No, not all of them.
No, the colors correspond to what was in the proposal, so the red and the orange are a higher priority. So that remains unchanged. I didn't change any of those colors. The only thing that's new are the columns.
Extra columns?
Yeah.
I don't know if we have any public comment.
You want to take public comment first? We can do that. The tree warden is here. Would he, would, is there anything that you'd like to add, to comment?
Members of the board, Mr. Bernie. You have the list, I mean, as a tree warden, and that only seems to carry any weight as long as nobody disagrees. So take that for what it's worth. But nevertheless, traveled that circuit no fewer than four times, two by myself and two with a gentleman who helped me, calling my consultant. And I have nothing but respect for the folks from Unitil and the work they're putting into this. But I'm going to agree, after making the route a number of times, with the list that was submitted the night, the evening rather, of the most recent walk-through. And I think folks from Unitil are on board with that, save two or three trees. And I just think, as a town, I mean, I've worked with Dave, worked with Sarah a number, you know, for years, and never had an issue. I just think as a community, they'll have to pardon us for being a little more conservative in this particular stretch. This is one of our major gateways, beautiful old trees. We understand what they're trying to accomplish. In this case, if we're talking about 16 trees or 13 trees, and we disagree on three or four, I think that's a pretty good compromise. So as a tree warden, as a citizen, DPW Director, I'm in favor of the list as suggested by our tree person, it was last Tuesday, prior to the selectmen's meeting.
Excellent. You were correct, there are three that were disagreed upon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Anything else? No, thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Thank you for the sidewalk, too. That was very informative. Public comment? Is there public comment about the hearing? Please?
Ron DeLisio, 181 Reservoir Road. I had emailed a public comment, but I wasn't sure if I was going to get here, so I'll just read it into the record. "I am responding to the request for public input regarding Unitil's storm resiliency plan. I oppose any plan which includes aggressive tree and vegetation removal. My reasons are both personal and practical. I had a bad experience when Unitil conducted ground-to-sky clearing on Reservoir Road in 2010. The tree company responsible for carrying out the project did not follow my instructions for which trees I was permitting to be removed and trimmed from my property. I was not home when the work was performed on my property. When I did arrive home from work, I found 72 stumps on my property beyond the town, what was removed from the town right-of-way. Forty-two of the stumps qualified as trees, which were over three inches in diameter, and 30 of the stumps were considered underbrush, which were three inches in diameter or less. In addition, there were trees trimmed on my property without my permission. There were only six trees on my property marked with ribbons to request removal prior to the work being done. Two of the six marked trees I instructed were to be trimmed only, so my expectation was the removal of four trees. The clear cutting of trees and underbrush on my property occurred in an area where I was relying on the existing vegetation to cleanse and absorb the stormwater runoff my property receives from the street. The loss of electricity had never been a concern on my property, as we purchased a generator when we bought our house in 1999. The greatest threat to the property has always been the polluted floodwater from the street. Both Steve Weaver and Sarah Cammer have publicly commented expressing stormwater should be considered in the removal of trees along our streets. I strongly agree and would hope the DPW Director and others will scrutinize vegetation removal with stormwater in mind. After the unauthorized removal of trees from my property, I began working with an attorney to pursue compensation for the loss. I eventually decided against taking any legal action. I realized I was the one most responsible for what occurred on my property, because I should have known better than to allow this type of work and these types of companies onto my property in the first place. Not long after, a representative from Unitil and a representative from the tree company met with me. The tree company offered replacement trees, which I accepted. The replacement trees were never delivered. My experience taught me, these companies do not know how to follow directions or honor their word. They only understand and respond to force. One of the reasons we moved to Lunenburg and specifically chose our property was due to the abundance of trees. Common sense told us it would be wise to own a generator, due to the number of trees. We also knew Unitil's track record for interrupted service as we both grew up in Townsend. We did not expect or trust that company to be concerned about our property or well-being. Since the 2008 ice storm, the pendulum has swung to the extent where Unitil wants to eliminate and butcher as many trees as possible near power lines, even healthy trees, which pose no imminent threat. I disagree with the philosophy Unitil has adopted under pressure by the state. It is another example of the state trying to dictate the physical aspects and appearance of our town. I do not believe in sacrificing the small amount of self-determination we have as a community out of fear or the claim of safety. It diminishes the beauty of the town while giving a false sense of security. It has not escaped my attention that government bureaucracy has become so massive and overreaching, it does not even seem to notice its own contradictions. I have to look no further than my property and street to see these contradictions for myself. One government agency gave a directive for removal of trees and vegetation along the power lines which border our roadways, while another, while other government agencies are mandating costly stormwater controls along these same roadways. There is no doubt in my mind, the town and my property would have been best served by leaving the existing trees and vegetation in place, including all that was removed from the town right-of-way. Tree trimming should have been the only thing allowed in that area to address both the power lines and the stormwater. Now there is a barren area in the lowest point in the town right-of-way where the water typically enters my property. The water enters with such force, it has cut a path onto my property. Leaving the entire area undisturbed other than tree trimming would have been the best and most cost-effective solution. As ratepayers, the cost of all this tree removal is being passed on to us. We are also paying for any replacement trees Unitil provides. Then we are left with barren areas which may require additional costly stormwater structures, and soon we will be charged for any stormwater created by impervious surfaces on our property. The costs are never-ending. The current approach of destroying and later having to reconstruct areas along our roadways defies logic, economics, aesthetics, and nature. My recommendation is to adopt a hybrid approach to tree and vegetation removal, which considers stormwater at least equally, if not greater than, electric service. I think we as individuals, as well, we as a community should be allowed to determine our own priorities and not mindlessly jump through hoops and simply accept the nonsense being thrust upon us from outside sources. During my brief service on the planning board, I had the opportunity to review the permission slips or work orders that were generated through Unitil's outreach to private property owners. If I remember correctly, the storm resiliency plan mentions underbrush, but there was no mention of underbrush in any of the work orders I read. I hope sharing my experience will ensure property owners understand exactly what they are agreeing to have removed from their properties and the possible unintended consequences of vegetation removal. I am very thankful the planning board and Board of Selectmen have not accepted Unitil's plan as gospel. I hope property owners will question the plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? You're up.
I think it's more of a question. Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive, maybe commenting as a citizen. I guess one thing I'd ask tonight is I get a little confused when I hear this. What is the work beyond the scope of the list? We keep talking about the list, and I really think we need to be very clear about what the scope of the project is beyond the list, because it's much more than the list. It's the private trees, it's the brush and the small trees. So I guess that's one thing I would say, is what is the work beyond the scope of the list? I was surprised to learn like a small, healthy tree that's well below the wires would be removed. So I don't completely understand. It sounds like they're saying, oh, we'll just cut down the ones you want. Is that just in regards to the list? And everything else goes anyways? So I guess I'd want some clarity on that. One thing in particular was another selectman on the walk. They keep saying 10 feet from the wires, 10 feet from the wires. Well, the branch was 10 feet from the wires, and the tree was probably 25 feet from the wires. So when we say 10 feet from the wires, it's like anything, 10 feet from the wires. So a branch from a tree that's much further away. I think that expands the scope of what we think it is, so I'm a little not clear there. So then my recommendation, when we talk about the list and the trees that clearly need to go, is that as a town, we mark the ones we want Unitil to remove rather than they mark. Everything's so heavily marked and tagged and discussed at this point, I can't clearly understand what the list is and who agreed to the list, because there was some on there that, on the walk, they said, a couple of people were like, yeah, let's take that. And I was like, I'd totally keep that one. So what is the list? Who decided what? I haven't seen that list, so I don't know if it matches my list, but I started putting like frowny faces on the ones I would have said keep. So I would just say if we do agree to let them do any tree cutting, that we as a town should mark our town trees that we'd like removed, so that we're very clear which ones we'd take. Because once they cut them down, can't put them back, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none? Do you, do we have comments yet?
I'm good for now.
Okay. Would you like to respond to any of the public comments?
Yes, so regarding the comment of previous work that was done, I apologize for any work that happened before we were here. I began the vegetation management program at Unitil in 2011. This program is different than the one that happened before, although they have similar goals. It is being managed by an arborist, so we hope to learn from any past mistakes that customers may have had and provide transparency here to the board and to the residents. The questions regarding the scope of work, the list is just for removals, so that's talking about removals. It also indicates pruning on there, but there is a choice to decide between our storm resiliency scope pruning, which is ground-to-sky, or regular pruning. When we talk about 10 feet, it's from the outermost phase, and it's pruning all of those branches so that there's clearance from the wire 10 feet to the branch. So trees may originate outside of the town right-of-way and have branches that come into the right-of-way that would be pruned in the town right-of-way. In addition to the removal, there is the question of removing undergrowth, and all of that goes before both boards. So tonight, we're talking about considerations for scenic road. The planning board makes the recommendations for scenic road. Whatever is decided as approved for permitting for scenic road purposes will then go before the Board of Selectmen related to Massachusetts Shade Tree Law. Chapter 87 Shade Tree Law, Sections 4 and 5 relate to pruning and removal of trees, and that's where the size class for diameter of pruning of what needs approval from the tree warden can be discussed and talked about. We are recommending that the planning board provide a recommendation to the tree warden, who makes the decision on the pruning, and small tree removals under three inches in diameter. So at that point, there still would be some discussion from the Select Board on the Massachusetts Shade Tree pruning and hearings. So today, we were just looking at getting a recommendation from a scenic road perspective, which includes pruning, clearances, removals, and the flat cutting of small trees within 10 feet of the conductors.
Good. Thank you. On the public walk with the Board of Selectmen, the question came up, is there, does the scenic road apply to only the right-of-way, or is there a setback?
Only the right-of-way.
So there, do you remember the total number of trees that were on that BOS walk? Was that 16?
Originally, we provided 27 trees.
Okay.
It got narrowed down to 13 that were the notes that we had taken, which is what's on the list. That was a majority of people agreeing that a tree should be removed, the tree warden and his representative. There may still have been some dissension, but that was Unitil's proposal for what was determined on the sidewalk.
Okay.
So that is our choice number two.
And so basically, I guess I'm not understanding why the differences of numbers. I thought, well, so in both regards, we're only speaking about within the right-of-way?
Correct.
Yep, trees that are without the right-of-way, we had talked about not being able to provide customer information on their choices on their trees.
Sure.
And even if you were to grant permission under the Scenic Road Act, the trees may still not be removed until the Shade Tree Act is dealt with by the Select Board.
Okay. Thank you for that. So this is my last one. Well, to summarize, the three, so I haven't been on that sidewalk last week, last Tuesday. It was very informative. We went tree by tree. Tom Alonso, the Board of Selectmen Chair, got, with Jack, kind of guided us along. And the three, of the three, one of the trees that's in dispute was on the town common where the bass, where the gazebo is, the gazebo where they hold the band concerts. The recommendation from the tree warden's consultant was not to remove, but to trim. The other two...
So that would be tree number 12.
That was tree number six, I believe.
Yeah, six.
Tree numbers 12 and the other one that was in contention were both on Lancaster Ave, I believe?
Correct.
One of them near the end, near Rollstone, and the other one kind of in the middle?
Yes.
One of them is a Norway maple, an invasive species, so we're told. One of them was a hemlock, was the one in the middle, and the one in the end was a maple. And I believe they were, the maple was 30 inches, the hemlock...
Tree 24.
Same size.
Come on.
Tree 12. And the Norway maple was 16 to 20.
All right, so any input yet?
I guess my question on this list, are any of these trees, would be, they be covered under normal pruning as opposed to, I know it's kind of a umbrella of normal pruning and storm resiliency? Are any of the ones that are slated for removal under the storm resiliency, would these also be covered under the normal pruning?
So that's one of the choices for today. You can choose storm resiliency pruning or regular pruning, or some other choice that you decide. If we do not remove the tree, we would be looking to prune it based on the specifications you choose.
So the storm resiliency program is a funding bucket that you have, correct?
Correct.
And the pruning that's done under that is more intense than your normal pruning. But if the board looks at this list and says, we're willing to give you X number, and you look at it and say, well, this doesn't meet storm resiliency, but we find these trees to be hazardous, we're still looking, you would still be looking to remove them in some way. So we're not looking to make a judgment on the storm resiliency program. You're looking at these trees right now, and I know there's a separate question about pruning, but they're asking to remove these trees, regardless of how, the storm resiliency is a funding term, and it goes with a pruning term. So I think what they're asking is, can we remove these trees?
So we will figure out our funding.
They can't do just normal pruning with the storm resiliency money, is basically...
Yes, because we have to prove that we got some benefit from it. But we are making a commitment to do the trees as requested, regardless of where we, you know, move the funding from, or which bucket we use it, because there is a reliability concern, and we do want to prove a reliability, you know, whichever way is best. We are recommending, you know, an intensive program. If it's not a good fit, then we will do our regular program or whatever you think fits best for the road.
Okay. One more question. There was one tree that was specifically spoken about that could be removed by the next two days later. Has that been removed?
We have not taken it down yet.
Okay. Which number was that? Do you remember?
That was number... That was tree number five.
Okay, thank you. Oh, another one on the comma, that's right.
Yep.
So most of that recap was for your, and anybody else's information that wasn't on the walk?
I was on the first walk, I just didn't...
Yeah, well, this one was a lot more specific, and there was a lot more details, and it included, included the consultant arborist, arborist, tree, tree pruner, tree person. So I'm personally inclined to let them go with the ones that were agreed upon.
Well, I think the first thing would be, do we want to close a public hearing?
Do we want to close? We've heard from all the public input that they want.
Heard from everybody.
The one, if you, you can deliberate without closing it, and that would allow you to ask questions of the applicant and gain new information. If you close it, and in your deliberation, you have a question that would require... If you close it, and in your deliberation, you have a question that would require an answer that may or may not be information you've heard before, you wouldn't be able to avail yourself of that. So, I'm not saying, "Don't close it." I'm saying, that's the one, the one benefit of keeping it open is, as you discuss, you know, maybe if you discuss the four trees that are in, you know, that weren't necessarily agreed upon, that they feel that they need to remove, there may be some questions that come up. But, that's up to the three of you.
So, we've also got a letter signed by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and the author is 15 citizens. Should we read that into the record?
Sure.
I actually had a question about that letter. It doesn't give any other addresses. Do we, I mean, it doesn't say, "These people agree with my statement." It's just a list of signatures.
Well, not only that, but if they don't live on a scenic road, then...
There was just, I just gave them a number of signatures.
Just like we take any public comment, we ask for their names, and regardless of whether they live in town or not.
You could, you could take it as the individual who wrote the letter.
Right. No, I would definitely take that, but I can't just take a list of names at the bottom of a piece of paper as testimony.
Sure. I'm not suggesting that you do. I'm saying that-
I mean, so, and again, I don't want to disregard what-
You read the letter?
I did. Yeah.
Okay.
Again, it doesn't give any indication that these people agree with that statement. They just basically signed a piece of paper, and we don't know.
True enough. So, one resident of the town who does live on the scenic road and does have trees in front of their house that we looked at, "From Emery Phelps, August 15, 2019, to Tom Alonso, Heather Lemieux, Jack Radwkins, Adam Burney, Ari, Storm Resiliency Program, Lemmster Road and Lancaster Ave. I have served on the Historic Commission Building Reuse Committee and helped write the APDC document designed to protect our historic community. Protecting the historic district is very important to me, as well as the entire Lunenburg community. However, so is the safety of the citizens who live along Lemmster Road and Lancaster Ave. I had the opportunity to listen to the meeting with the Planning Board, Selectmen, and representatives from Unitil on August 12, 2019. Our area lost electricity 23 times one year. I asked Unitil why and was told that some individuals didn't want their trees trimmed or trees removed. Another year, when I asked why we had no power, it was because of fallen limbs on Lancaster Ave. Listening to the Selectmen at this meeting, their priority seemed to be the beauty of the trees and streets. I totally disagree with this and want the town to put its people first while making the right decisions about how best to preserve our forestry. I am totally confident that Jack Radwkins, working with David Clappam, Forestry Supervisor for Unitil, can make intelligent decisions about which trees come down and branches trimmed to protect our citizens. I have walked and found large tree branches fallen on the sidewalk and even on the streets. Fortunately, no one happened to be walking under them, but that can certainly happen in the future if this situation isn't handled properly by the experts. Unitil is willing to invest in our community and do what is the best way to keep power on, and the Selectmen really need to listen to the professional advice they are giving us. Emery Phelps." So, I guess the portion of that that speaks to this hearing is the scenic road. And, I'm really not clear on, well, I mean, to go along with the spirit of that letter, as far as I understand it, agreeing to all the trees agreed upon by both parties, and then reviewing the three disagreed upon, I think would be prudent.
I mean, from the information I have, I'm not in favor of the full storm resiliency. I'm in favor of regular pruning, and then, and again, I don't want to kick the can down the road to the Board of Selectmen, but if we, just for my sake, if I agree to the, just the regular pruning, would that also be able to include the list that was presented at the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. So, I guess, I mean-
Yeah. So, if you agree to pruning, then-
And then, so if I, and again, I'll probably ask this to Adam, so if I motion to do, just have them do regular pruning to include the trees that were, you know, agreed upon by the town and Unitil to remove at the sidewalk, who would the Board of Selectmen determine which of those trees, if they would be able to reject?
Under the Shade Tree Act, they would do so. And under, you'd say, "Under the Scenic Road Act, we find that these, the removal of these trees won't denigrate from the scenic road because they, they're found to be hazardous and will eventually need to be removed for safety," or something to that effect.
Right. I mean-
And then, the Selectmen will need to address them as shade trees.
Because, I mean, from the sidewalk, I mean, I saw there were some that were dead that obviously need to be removed, and some, and then, I guess, I mean, the condition of the trees as they are now, after talking with the consultant and the tree warden, I mean, neglect of the, the pruning has led to the trees being in this condition. There's like selective pruning of them being pruned around. I don't see why they weren't pruned lower to encourage growth up in a way. I mean, I drive to Winchton Inn every day, and there's roads where you can tell those trees have been pruned for years and years and years, and they're actually growing away from the wires and all leaning away from the wires. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, my back recommendation is just stick to regular pruning, and if we can include the trees that the Board of Selectmen agrees to, then I'd be okay with that.
Well, and again, you're not kicking the can down the road. The Planning Board needs to make a decision on, "We approve of these trees." And, they won't be able to be removed, the Selectmen approve of them. So, you can't base your decision on someone else making a decision-
I'm saying, I would agree to normal pruning and the trees that were agreed to.
And the 12, the 12 that are on here as everybody agreed to.
Right.
Okay.
13.
I'm sorry?
13.
13. Sorry.
But that would also give the town, I mean, the ability through the Board of Selectmen to, to question those 12.
So, I'm looking here for the SRP Tree Risk Assessment Form for number 12. I see that there's a number 2 between 11 and 13, but I don't think it's a sugar maple
You're looking at refusal 2? Is that what you're looking at?
I think so. Is that, is that number 12? It doesn't, it says sugar maple.
No, that's refusal number 2, so it looks like they're a little bit out of order. So, tree ID number 11 is page 43 and 44. Then, we have a refusal in there, which is the customer is requesting refusal, and that's listed as refusal on the paperwork, refusal 2. Then, it skips to tree ID number 13. So, it looks like we're missing, either it's out of order, or it somehow didn't get scanned in on page tree ID 12. Was it in the original, Dave?
Yeah, it must have been on the TFO. We just, we'll strike that in the list of not being removed into the not removed.
Which 12? Let's see.
Okay.
It's probably in the other one. We probably have it here. That was the hemlock.
That was a 30-inch hemlock, right? That's a huge hemlock.
Yep.
I probably have it. Well, I mean, would you like us to find it if you want? Or we can strike that one from the list and make it 12?
Um, I was just hoping to see if there was more specifics that we could actually try to work the difference of opinion, but-
I do recall the tree. It is a 30-inch hemlock. It's a 30-inch hemlock on the edge of the road between the second house coming down from Whiting Street on Lancaster Ave and the third house. We had stopped there for a little bit because there's a bunch of trees marked there and everything.
Right in front of the really bad concrete cover.
Yes. To me, it seemed hollow where the, the union was at the base-
Mm-hmm.
Because they had the two stems, the back stem was, I want to say, 50% canopy loss, so it wasn't in great shape, and the town's tree council person-
Mm-hmm.
Said that we should take off the front half in the walk and leave the back half.
So, I don't think there's any indication if-
But, I mean, we can just do regular pruning through there and, and leave that-
Take the larger, okay.
I don't think it was in the original.
I mean, in terms of the pruning, I agree with Mr. Bittner that I think standard pruning applies. I don't, I wouldn't support ground to sky on any of the scenic roads.
Okay.
And I'm looking at this more or less closely now because we're in the center of town, but also, whatever decision we make, how do we apply that to the rest of Lancaster Ave? Because ultimately, their goal is to get to the end of Lancaster Ave, and there is one section in particular, down towards the end of Stillman's property, you go over the brook that comes out of Massapug, and on the left-hand side, as you head out of town, there's just a massive amount of oaks that line that side of the road, and they've all been pruned, and all their canopies reach up over the power lines, and if we okay ground to sky in those areas, it is just going to open things up. And I, I would be willing to bet that in those areas, you're going to remove more than a third of the canopy, and so, at that point, you should probably remove the whole tree. And, in my mind, that's just too big of a change.
In, in the original proposal, we had, we had spoken about stopping at 555, which would be roughly halfway down Lancaster, not all the way past Stillman's.
Right around Page Street.
Yeah.
Oh, so not even close, not even to Kilborn.
Right. Yep. Yeah, right before Kilman, at the farm at the base of the hill right there is where we were stopping.
Oh, that would be Goodrich.
No, before Goodrich, where Kilborn comes out.
Yeah, he's talking about Violet's Farm. Violet's Farm, I'm sure. Yep.
And, the regular pruning, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, is 3 minus. So, everything, 3 inches and under is, is cut in your normal pruning?
Normal pruning, what we do is, we try and get 10 feet to the side, 15 feet through clearance, and if then, 8 inches or less from the, and that would be from the center of town all the way down through the whole Lancaster Ave. And that would be brush removal of 8 inches and less as well.
8 inches and less for normal pruning?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay.
However, related to mass shade tree, there are differences in terminology. So, we would be looking for anything that's 3 inches and less. Related to mass shade tree law, everything 3 inches to 8 inches is considered a tree-
Okay.
And that would-
That would require the Selectmen to, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, in terms of the rest of the trees, I don't know. I, I struggle a little bit with it because even though we have a list, you know, some of the trees that are out there don't qualify as quote-unquote "trees" because they're not big enough and so on. And, my thought process is, no one that I can think of has planted a tree in these areas. I think the last tree we planted that I can recall is on the common. And, so, as this initiative goes forward, every time you clear out all the 3-inch trees or all the 8-inch trees, you don't have trees replacing any of these, other than whatever Unitil's providing. So, I would just err on the side of caution.
Or, or what's growing naturally. I mean, if no one's planted these trees, they're, they're certainly coming from somewhere.
We would only be removing incompatible, so if it is a compatible-sized tree, it can stay. So, we're not removing all vegetation. It's only those things which are tall enough to grow into the lines, so. Winterberry, witch hazel, all that can stay.
Okay.
Blueberry, rhododendron.
So, if they make 3 inches in diameter before they get to the lines, they're, they're kind of in a safe zone?
Well, even, even if they get that size, they'll never reach the lines.
Okay.
So, a species that is not going to grow tall enough to conduct the wires, so, and max height is 20 feet or below.
And is that what you call incompatible?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, they'll leave all the trees that will never become shade trees?
Correct.
And then, they will never need shade tree approval because there will not be any trees that are shade trees.
In our-
But if they're more than 3 inches, they're, they're protected, well, they're covered by the BOS.
Correct. So, they would still go through the shade tree removal process. And in our proposal, we did revise the replacement program, so there are some notes in there where you'll see, we do encourage the planting of shade trees, and we are giving away large trees. We're just encouraging customers to plant them back away from the wires, so they're not directly in the wire zone. And we did work with Arbor Day Foundation, who's our partner for energy-saving trees, and we are going to be offering sugar maple, tulip tree, and sweet gum as our large native trees for the area, and then, small trees, we'll be offering sorvicherry, witch hazel, and sweet bay magnolia. So, we have put in order with them. We haven't got confirmation that they were able to reserve all of that as of yet, but that is what looks like it's going to be our replacement list, so we'll be offering those to the town and to residents.
Thanks. Thank you. And, do I recall correctly that the, the maples that turn the beautiful colors are only the sugar maples?
The sugar maple is the most brilliant, but a lot of the maple family does have a nice color.
And just, I was just doing some math on your, when it shows the number of customers and the service interruption, so from January 1, 2016, to July 1, 2019, which is roughly three and a half years, and your ranking, Circuit F 30, W 30, is the worst ranking one. So, we had 14,270, 17 customers interrupted, a total of 1,294, 571 minutes over the course of three years. That averages out to 26 minutes per customer per year that they've lost power. And I know some were longer than others, but to me, that doesn't seem like a dire need or put people in harm's way or danger. Understandably, people need their power. We did have the ice storm. I had no problem reaching out to my neighbors, and they had no problem reaching out to me. I think our community helps take care of itself. I mean, obviously, it's going to be a burden on some people, but 26 minutes a year, to me, doesn't seem like a desperate need to cut these trees to save that amount of power. So, I would go, I mean, with my initial statement, that I would be in favor of the pruning and approve the trees that were agreed to by the tree warden and the town. And then, if the Board of Selectmen have an issue with those trees, they can take that up under the shade tree.
All right. Is there any more public comment? Sure.
Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive. I still don't understand the scope of the project because they said the town would be eligible for replacement shade trees, and yet, we wouldn't be eligible to plant them from where the trees are being removed. So, I just am not understanding what's being offered versus what's going to be done versus why not just leave well enough alone and keep the trees we have. I just don't get it. Like, I, I know that we have power outages and things, but this is just, what's such a small area. It's like, does it lend itself to just continuing to cut down trees so they don't fall? It just doesn't make sense to me, but we just heard the town will be eligible for replacement shade trees. Where in those, we're going to-
They don't have to be under power lines. They blend in and come in.
See, it's all about power lines. It's not about trees, and I would rather take a power outage than lose all the trees, so.
Thank you.
And if they fall down, we can use them for firewood during the next power outage.
Can you repeat what you had said? Thank you.
We will be offering replacement trees for trees that have been removed on the town right-of-way. They can be replanted anywhere the town desires. So, if the town chooses a large-growing tree, it can plant it back on the common set away from the power lines. That's fine. If you would like to plant one directly back underneath, we offer low-growing trees which are compatible.
Okay. Now, is that at a 1 to 1?
It can be.
We can do 13.
We can do 13 replacements. Yeah.
13 trees, 13 replacements.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have anything else, or can we close the hearing?
I have one more said.
Do we need a motion, or do I just do it? Do we need a motion, or do I just do it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. So we're talking about 16 trees, and it sounds like consensus is that we wanna okay 13. And the three that we don't wanna okay are the three that were disagreed upon. Is that?
In terms of pruning, I think we need to decide that first, right? Just kind of following what they're looking for.
Okay, do you wanna go tree by tree?
Well, I, I think you're, you're picking a pruning class and then approving individual trees. So it's storm resilience pruning or standard pruning?
So, um, front, uh, there. So they're looking for direction from us, whether we're okay with the ground to sky versus normal pruning.
Um, I'm personally not at all in favor of the ground to sky in our scenic roads.
So.
I agree.
I think we're all on the same page to just stick with the normal pruning.
Okay.
And then in terms of the removals, I mean, I look at this relative to what we've done in these areas. This, to me, is a big step to take. I don't think we've really been very aggressive with removals. I know since the ice storm, there's been a lot more forestry work going on. And so I would just err on the side of caution in that we can always go back and remove another tree down the road.
Yeah, we can't put it back up.
Thirty-inch maples.
Right.
I counted out that there's eight trees on the list that are in red. And I'd be in favor of removing those. I don't think I'd be in favor of removing the ones in the orange, which would either be the 12 or 16.
I think there's, well, there's, there's, there's a good amount of, um, remove in the black, too.
Uh, you're going with the yellow column is what they're proposing for this evening.
Okay.
So priority one trees are the trees that have defects that need immediate attention. And I don't have any issue with removing a tree that needs immediate attention. But I think we should.
Okay, so.
Remove as many trees as possible.
We seem to be unanimous on the not ground to sky. What's your input on the, uh, the immediate versus the short-term versus the long-term? Red, orange, black?
I mean, if they, if, to make the decision tonight, I'd have to agree with Tanner, the ones that are in immediate danger should go.
Just the red?
Just the red, yeah.
That's five, seven, eight, nine, 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Five, seven. Was, was that consistent with what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Okay, it was consistent with what I was thinking. So we can check those off right now.
And who, I mean, as far as remediation for those who propose us that, us?
That, well, they've, they've offered you replacement. Uh, and that would, it would be part of your decision on the scenic road, what, what the remediation is.
Right, 'cause I mean, I wouldn't wanna remove trees from a scenic road and then put them somewhere other than the scenic road because that's the whole purpose we're having this hearing is that it's.
And, you know, getting a compatible species.
Because of the trees.
Yeah, and getting a compatible species that they're giving you and telling you is compatible would mean that that tree would remain in place.
Right.
Going forward.
And I obviously don't want them to replace trees and just run back into the same problem in the 10 years where they're gonna wanna cut those ones down.
Mm-hmm.
Can we condition it at the discretion of the tree warden as to where?
For the replacement?
Replaced with, in the scenic road?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, what you can say is, is, um, I would word the motion to include the board's decision on pruning, which sounds like you guys want the normal pruning.
Yep.
Uh, the list of the trees to be removed, and I think that you can reference them from what Unitil has provided you, and then, uh, condition it with mitigation to be one-for-one replacement for removals to be placed along the scenic road at the direction of the tree warden or something to that effect. You know, of a species to, of a compatible species to be placed at the direction of the tree warden.
Comparable species, sorry, I'm just reading this down.
And that way you'll avoid the issue of, oh, let's get a, let's get a red maple and plant it, you know, right next to the pole.
Tree warden. Within scenic. So they, sorry, just for the remediation, it would be within the scenic road right of way, or, I mean, how would I?
I, you, and you could say within the area of removal along the scenic road? I mean, 'cause the scenic road, he could go and put it on Northfield if he really wanted to.
Right, right, right.
That's the scenic road, so you, you, you could say replaced on the scenic road where it was removed or something. We can, we can figure that. I mean, if you get the spirit of it in the motion, we'll come up with language that.
Okay.
Anything more on specifics?
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
So we only wanted to approve the red to be removed, and we only wanted to approve the pruning to be the normal pruning. What about the orange and black to be removed? Just to be perfectly specific and clear.
It was my understanding from their proposal that the, in the yellow column, anything that says prune is not, is no longer proposed to be removed.
Right.
And the remainder of the trees proposed to be removed would be what was discussed on the walk and that the Towns' consulting forester or consulting person indicated he felt were reasonable to remove. Uh, and if you're only approving the ones in red, I would, again, list them out by number, five, seven, eight, nine, 20, 21, 22, and 23. And the rest are to be pruned as normal or proposed to be removed at a future date, uh, under a separate hearing. You know, if the condition changes or if there's other imminent hazards that comes along with it.
So then that really only leaves us three, I think, in orange that are proposed to be removed. No, two in orange, one of them, one of those is black. So there's two in two, two orange and two black that are proposed to be removed. How do we wanna handle that?
No, there's four orange.
Okay, well, like, we're.
Six.
Six, six, 12, and 24. It sounded like we were unanimous about not wanting to.
Correct, six, 10, 12, and 24 are the remainders. Oh, I'm sorry, they're, they're remainders that are proposed, that are requested to be removed and are highlighted in orange.
Three, as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, three. Three, six, 12, and 24. 10, 12, and 24, so there's five. I apparently can't count.
That's all right. So in, in my mind, we had already eliminated six, 12, and 24 from the conversation of removal. We wanted to ask that they prune rather than remove, is, am I correct? For the three that were in, in, um, conflict between our consultant and the Unitil consultant.
So you're saying three and 16, I'm sorry, three and 10 are the two that remain that you have discussed?
Three, 10, yeah. And then in the black, there's four, 11, four and 11. So I guess we could just say that, that we approved of the red ones to be removed and then we wanted all the others to be pruned?
Exactly. I just feel like that's kind of the common ground. There's no question in anybody's mind that those trees need to be removed. And so that's why I was in favor of just doing the eight trees in red.
So three and four are 24 to 30-inch diameter trees. 10 and 11 are also proposed to be removed. They're both 30, no, one's 30 inches plus and the other's eight to 12 maple. So these are sizable trees.
Appropriate, yeah. But like 16 through 19, they're all in orange, but, you know, our consultant basically said, leave them and prune them and.
Well, and, and Unitil has agreed to prune?
Yep.
Yep.
But I just look at the eight red ones and everybody's on the same page. And in my mind, there's no doubt from any perspective that these trees should be removed. And that's why I'd be in favor of just taking the eight red ones and leave everything else.
Okay. So.
I can make a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the normal pruning around conductors, 10-foot of side clearance, 15-foot of overhead clearance, and the removal of the trees that pose an imminent threat as listed in the Proposed Vegetation Management Work Summary and Meeting Decision Reporting of Trees Number 5, 7, 8, 9, 20, 21, 22, 23, with one-to-one remediation of a comparable species to be determined by the tree warden within the area of removal of the scenic road where the tree was removed.
Second.
I guess we can make multiple motions? 'Cause we didn't talk about pruning?
Yeah, he made a motion to the pruning.
Oh, and, and the red, okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. There we have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll put together a, a letter outlining what the approval says and we'll, we'll get it over to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is out of the way. So, um, are you for 400 Electric Ave?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Uh, so this is a request for de minimis change for the Dunkin' Donuts, formerly known as Sky Cycle.
Yeah, so I'm John Higgins with South Coast Development, the developer slash builder of the site. But I'm here for, in request of Dunkin', to ask if we can change the menu order board location. And when I asked Dunkin' for the reason, um, it's because all the new Dunkins that are being built or remodeled as part of the next-gen Dunkin', you know, programmer system. And they find that seven cars would be more efficient than five-car lineup. The reason being, if it's busy at the moment, you know, early in the morning or whatever, you would actually be able to put your order in sooner than the car five. So if there was, you know, 10 cars, you would actually put your order in sooner than car five. And while you're waiting in the same line, they'd be able to work on your order rather than waiting in, in line to order at a later time.
And can you explain to us why this has to be a de minimis change? I mean, why, why did they bother to come? Because it's a difference in the plan that was approved?
Correct, 'cause the, the menu board was on, and that's why it's a de minimis change, not a full modification.
Okay.
They're picking a sign up and moving it two cars back. The sign was shown on the plan. The approval requires they build per the approved plan.
Right.
And where it's a drive-through, it's better to be safe than not. Doesn't change the stacking. They have plenty of stacking beyond the menu board onsite. Uh, and I think to Mr. Higgins' point, it does make the line move a little bit faster because you're not sitting waiting.
They're more likely to have it ready by the time you get to the.
Amateurs, they should use the app and just have it to the delivery window.
Well, I'm in favor of anything that makes the Dunkin' line move fast.
So, and you're not changing any lighting, it's just moving the sign that was originally proposed, okay?
You know, and in theory, it actually helps the neighborhood. There is a residential property to the south, and the menu board now is 40 feet further away.
So north is to the right on the plan?
Yeah, so there's a residence there.
Not in Dana Street.
Oh, no, there's one on, on Electric Ave, too.
Oh, that's true.
For now. Someone's currently living there, so.
All right, does anybody have any issues?
I don't.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the de minimis change for the movement of the sign at 400 Electric Ave, Lunenburg, Mass.
Second.
Excellent, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll send you a letter with that information, but just go ahead and do what you need to do.
All right, um, the APD, APDC still, nobody?
Still not here.
So Butterfly Lane subdivision closeout.
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Chris Crowley from Earnco Development. Um, I was the developer for Butterfly Lane. So what we're looking to do is just start the closeout process for the town to take over Butterfly Lane. Construction's all done. All houses have been built on the property. And, uh, we started the process by getting an ASBIL to the board and to the review engineer, Graves Engineering. And the next step was myself, Adam, and Jeff Walsh did a walkthrough last week, or a week ago Friday. You know, to basically start the punch list pro, process. And what I was looking to do was get, um, a place in the public meeting in November to ultimately accept the road.
When was this project completed?
Um, the last house, well, we did the top coat of paving in November of last year.
Okay.
So what that did was got us one winter of plowing the road, which I was advised needed to be done before acceptance could take place.
Yep. And is there a separate, I guess a question for Adam, maintenance as far as stormwater basins and stuff like that?
There is, there is.
Or do they have to follow the same rules as, like, the schedules of town or?
Yeah, there's, there's two basins on, two open basins on site, and there's two storm scepters which are, or they're not storm scepters, they're a competitor, but they're, they're technically separation units.
They're labeled storm scepter.
They're treatment units.
Yeah.
And they should be maintaining them. When we were out there, there was some woody vegetation around the edge of one of them, um, and, and some areas that needed to be cleared. Uh, Mr. Crowley said, you know, we understand that, we'll do that. Um, the discussion was cleaning out the catch basins. They haven't used any salt, any sand up there, but just verifying that, that during construction and all of that, that they haven't gotten it out. Um, so that would need to be done prior to acceptance. What we found was a lot of small detail work of things that needed to be done. There was some, uh, areas that needed to be seal-coated. There was some grouting on the granite that needed to be done.
Yeah, yeah, that's nice.
Uh, some mortar on some pipes, I mean, nothing, uh, earth-shattering that, that would really affect the road and it. I mean, nothing earth-shattering that would really affect the road, and it's probably one or two days' worth of concerted work for someone to go out there and finish up. Mr. Crowley, you know, he was there, he heard the concerns, and I believe he's already at least begun scheduling and working to get that work completed. I think his longest issue is going to be replacing a couple of trees where they end up falling onto a residence property, and that's, I think, less of a can we do it, and more of a negotiation of where and how they get placed.
Yes, I have talked to, there's two property owners that I will be replacing and adding a couple of trees on, and they are on board with that. Like Adam said, it's not a matter of two doing it, it's more talking about where. And Adam and Jeff, you know, were in agreement that we could talk about definitely where before that actually happens. And as far as the rest of the list, yeah, I see no problem with taking care of everything on the list. And like Adam said, I have started scheduling. My plan was to maybe have a couple of things crossed off the list before I came tonight, but I just received the list on Thursday, so I didn't really have too much time to do that. But my hope was to, you know, start this process tonight, hopefully get a spot in the public meeting, and before the next planning board meeting, have all these items taken care of, and hopefully another review from, or another site visit from Jeff Walsh.
What's the deadline for the November meeting?
So the selectmen have put an article on for the acceptance. It's the actual, it's the 30th. So he's requested the layout hearing with the board, with the select board.
Yeah.
They've put you on the warrant for November 12.
Okay.
Their meeting on October 15th, so that would be before this board's next meeting. My recommendation to this board would be, in advising the select board, and, you know, it's up to you, you guys, how you want to do this, you could try and hold a special meeting before then to have Mr. Crowley all signed off and release his bond, or you could devise the select board that a clean letter from Graves would carry your endorsement for them laying the road out, because essentially what they're doing by accepting the layout is setting the table for town meeting to approve the acceptance of the road. And, you know, the work that remains to be done, again, as I said, is functionally housekeeping, but you ultimately have to release the bond in order for the subdivision to be closed out.
So we'd have to release the bond before the town could accept it?
Correct, before town meeting. Now, you meet on October 23rd.
I was gonna say, don't we have a...
But you don't have a meeting before the October 15th select board meeting where they lay it out.
Don't we have a joint meeting with the board of selectmen?
On October 1st, which is a week from tomorrow.
Right, right.
And even if Mr. Crowley could get it done, scheduling with Jeff to go out there and do the inspection might get tight for October 1st.
Yeah, I'm not expecting them to be ready in a week, but that would be an opportunity to have both groups together for any discussion that may be needed. I mean, if they put it on the agenda, not as to have them...
But they have it advertised for the 15th.
Okay.
Because that, they have to follow the layout hearing process.
So what are we approving or...
Right now, you're not approving anything. He's made the request, and in order to facilitate moving this along, we went and did the site walk.
Right.
Because that was, that's the first step to anything.
And when do we solicit information from, like, DPW, sewer, on the...
There's no sewer. It's all septic systems. It's all wells.
Okay.
Oh, it's town water.
It's town water? Oh, I apologize. So we would finalize that with Fran, who has signed off on all of the connections to the houses, so...
I guess with any decision I make, what is the benefit to the town of accepting this roadway?
That's, I don't know that there is a benefit. I don't know that there's a detriment. I mean, it's...
Well, we're gonna be half the plow?
Well, we're gonna have to plow, we're gonna have to maintain it.
So there is a detriment.
I mean, ultimately, though, if Mr. Crowley closed out his subdivision, he's no longer the owner, and he's not responsible for plowing. It becomes a private road. And in...
Right, but the town doesn't have to...
In many cases, the town will plow even private roads for public safety, whether it's the school bus, or whether it's emergency vehicle access. The town would receive additional Chapter 90 funds with this as a public road. For every mile of public road, the formula increases the amount of funding the town receives for Chapter 90. The, in theory, and I, again, I'm not an assessor or appraiser, houses on a public road have a higher value, thus create a higher tax incentive for the town. I'm not gonna argue for or against acceptance, just those are, those are things that are out there.
I don't think it's up to us to get into that discussion. That's town meetings.
That's correct. That's town meetings, true.
Right, right. Whether you're in favor of it or not, I think it's town meeting that does that.
Correct. And what you would be doing in making a recommendation to the select board is saying that they've met the construction standards of our rules and regulations under subdivision control.
I've got a scheduling question in terms of, when is our first meeting in October? I know we have...
It's not, it's October 20, it's October 1st and October 26th, because Columbus Day falls on the day that would be our normal meeting, and we actually lose the first meeting in November as well to Veterans Day.
And historically, has a town in the last 10 years not accepted?
Uh, no, in, I don't know about the last 10 years. I know in the spring after I started working here, so 2015, they accepted Whitetail Crossing.
Okay, yeah, I know that was...
And I think that was the last road that was accepted.
Okay. But that was the last one proposed to be accepted as a...
Correct, correct. I mean, we're not filthy with people putting in new roads that they're looking to have us accept.
Right, right.
I mean, isn't the intent, when we got the permit to build it, that it's gonna be accepted someday?
None of us...
Your intent?
None of us were sitting here at that time.
I was. It's never implied. I mean...
Oh, okay.
I mean, it always goes to the town meeting, and have you been to the town meetings?
I have not.
They're fairly fickle.
Well, right, and basically, that's what I, I mean, if I was to propose anything or recommend anything at town meeting, I wouldn't want the residents to know the pros and cons, regardless of what they would be.
And, you know, I think that it's very subjective what the pros and cons are.
Well, I think in this case, we're just here to evaluate, have they...
Correct. Have they met the subdivision standards?
Planned, and as long as they did that, then it's up to town meeting to decide. I'm wondering if it makes sense to try to meet on October 7th.
8th?
It would have to be the...
Oh, because Tuesday, the first would be, well, the, okay, yeah, yeah, 7th, because I'm thinking the first is...
7th is a...
Tuesday is the...
Columbus Day and...
The 7th is that Columbus Day we can't meet. We can't, we can't have a legal meeting on a, on a public holiday.
We can meet on a Tuesday.
Yeah, but Columbus Day is the 14th.
Oh, the 14th, I'm sorry. Yes, you could meet on the 7th.
Just knowing that we're gonna lose Columbus Day and Veterans Day, we didn't have quorum at our last meeting.
Correct.
I can meet the 7th.
Checking right now. Can you?
Yeah, I have no issue with the 7th, so...
And is that a special meeting to handle this, or just to have a second meeting in October?
Get a lot of stuff. Let's have a meeting, because I mean...
Again, I just want to be clear on what the expectations are.
That way we can button up since town meeting's coming up, but just make sure we got everything taken care of.
And then, I guess I would ask the applicant, would you be able to get most of this work done by the 7th?
Um, I, yes, I will be able to get it done. You know, the biggest thing would be Jeff Walsh getting back out there and getting a letter back from him, which I don't know if that could be a...
If you want, if we can, if we can schedule the site visit now...
Okay.
And, you know, pending Jeff being available, but if, if we schedule the site visit for the 3rd of October, give you about two weeks to get stuff done.
Yep.
Jeff could get out there and inspect it, and even if he hasn't finished a formal letter, if we can get an email from him that says, "I'm finalizing the letter, everything's good,"
Yep.
for that Monday, that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
We would be able to review it.
Correct, and you'd be able to pass along a clean bill of health to the select board on the 15th.
So the 3rd, you were talking, is a Thursday?
Correct.
That would be with you and Jeff?
That would be Jeff and Chris and I.
Okay. That works.
So I'll get in touch with Jeff about meeting on the 3rd.
Okay.
And if there's a time that doesn't work, let me know.
Okay.
And I was gonna make a comment, that you didn't call out rims and inverts on the catch basins and the DMH's drain manholes in the roadway, but I caught they are in the profile, so there are just a few bearings that don't have arrows, which I'm sure when, once it gets stamped, that will get fixed.
Okay. Yeah, I have already reached out to Whitman and Bingham and sent them Jeff Walsh's review to button up whatever it is they needed to button up on their end. And then, as far as, I mean, getting the things done, if you go through, it's, when we do meet with Jeff again there, it's gonna be either was it done or was it not done? You know, it's not, there isn't much review to put into it, you know, is my understanding and hope.
Excellent. Well, since there's nothing for us to approve or deliberate on, I guess, if you're, if you're happy, we're happy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, earth removal.
So, it comes down to, I would have to get this to the town manager in the next seven days to get it on the warrant for November. Is this something that the board feels it's gonna be able to button up by, you know, early October in order to get stuff together and printed for the warrant for November 12th? I've only received comments from one board member, so there hasn't been a lot of changes since the middle of August to the document, because...
Have we gotten the response from Jim Graffey?
I have.
He is back from...
He is, and I have gotten it from him, and he just says he would require soil evaluation to determine seasonal high groundwater as they use for the design of a septic system. So there was only one thing that he had commented on in the regulations to change, and that was for the seasonal ground, high groundwater.
Well, I believe we also requested the explanation on how to do the soil evaluation in stone.
He's, well, he said per the...
Per Title V.
Yeah.
So then it's a refusal, it's, it's, Title V requires four feet of naturally occurring pervious material.
Mm-hmm.
And in stone, in bedrock outcrops, you have none. But I... So the removal permits typically are for quarrying, aren't they? Quarrying of some sort?
Not typically, I mean, most of them are for gravel removal.
Okay, so that...
Earth and gravel.
Like, like...
We only have one quarry permit right now.
Okay.
And most of that work is being done in another town.
Yeah. Well, I don't know about most.
And the rules and regs we do on our own?
Correct. Those aren't required for town meeting.
Okay.
It would just be the bylaw. And, you know, I think that having an idea of what the rules and regs might look like would, would be helpful for town meeting.
Right.
But not, not crucial, because you always have time to adjust them, because if the bylaw's approved at town meeting, goes to the AG, her office has 90 days to review the bylaw for legal compliance and process. When they submit their letter back to the town, it then is posted for 90 days prior to it being legal. So you would have at least 180 days to, from town meeting, actually 190, because there's a 10-day waiting period for certification of the votes. So you'd have over, what is that, 180 is five months, six months, to be able to work on your regulations before the bylaw was enforced.
Yeah, I just had a couple, like, about the, like, the times of operation and stuff like that.
Yeah, and that stuff I think is...
I think they should be based on an individual. I don't think we should blanket those.
And that's fine.
And does that, so would the rules and regs cover, like, the general limitations cover enforcement of that, or would that be, you know what I mean? How do we address, like, under general limitations, as we'll produce noise dust, not just effects, if it does any of those things, how do we address it?
That would be enforceable, through, through the enforcement mechanisms in the bylaw.
Okay.
So, I mean, the first line of enforcement, 14012, is the PGA or its authorized agent shall enforce this article, its regulations, and the requirements and conditions of the permits, of permits issued thereunder and may pursue civil and criminal remedies for violations of the same.
And how, these are good for three years now?
Uh, yeah, I think Paula had recommended, and I believe you all have her comments or had her comments.
And do we...
She suggested five years with three-year renewal, based on the nature and scope of earth removal. I don't know if the board is in favor of that.
And do we have any inspection, annual inspection process? Not necessarily a renewal of a permit, but just to have somebody go look once a year to make sure?
Uh, I mean, we can certainly...
Because you can do a lot of damage in five years.
True.
You know what I mean? I'm not saying that they need to come in for a new permit, and I hate to wait for people to complain if there's a problem. I'd like to be identified and addressed as soon as possible, not just kind of turn a blind eye until somebody complains.
And that's something we can bake into the regulations. It's something that's currently done as part of the annual renewal.
Well, right, because they do it every year now.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see at least a biannual inspection, you know what I mean?
And...
Or something like that.
All of the existing permits have just been renewed.
Correct.
So, just from a scheduling standpoint, if we don't get this on for the fall town meeting and it goes on for the spring, really the only thing we're missing out on is anybody that's looking to pull a permit between now and then, because all of the existing operations have already been permitted and won't come up for renewal until August anyway.
Correct, but we, it would be covered under the existing bylaw, because if it made it to May, the 180-day clock wouldn't have run, so it would be under the existing bylaw and through the board of, the select board again.
When it comes up for renewal, the next...
In August, yes.
Okay, all right.
And it would be outside of these. It would be under what currently exists.
Unless you're a new operation.
No. Because this won't have, it won't be in full force and effect until, like, November, if it's approved in May.
Okay.
June, July, August, September, October, yeah, November.
Okay. Because of the 180-day...
Yes.
And Keating's is the only one with a...
Currently, I believe so.
And I know we've discussed that they're aware that we're doing this. Have we sent them an actual draft?
No, because it's a, it's a, it's not, it's not even, I wouldn't consider this a 75% draft, because there was discussion about how they're, you know, how people want to review it and want to submit comments, so I don't want to send them something that we end up either adding a giant section to, taking a section out of, rewording, changing, and then being like, "Oh, thanks for spending your time reviewing that, but we've completely changed the bylaw to this." So I wanted to have a, you know, pretty, pretty substantially complete draft, and I feel like we're still in, like, the 40% draft area.
Well, as I remember our last discussion, the key talking points were how many yards of material would trigger?
Mm-hmm.
That.
That was one of them.
Groundwater concerns.
Yep.
You know, who oversees that part of things. I agree with Mr. Allison in terms of how do you locate groundwater and bedrock and...
You don't, yeah.
And even, yeah, I mean, I'm not a soil scientist, but even if you drill a well in bedrock, my understanding is you're not gonna get a clear estimate of where that water table is, because it's gonna...
Yeah, because once you, once you pierce it, it's all gonna come shooting up.
Yeah, hydraulic pressure is gonna change the level in the well, so... I don't know how our existing bylaw, well...
It doesn't.
It doesn't. It doesn't provide for any of that, so. And I guess my point on the 1,000-yard trigger point would be, what if you had a person that was in a situation that was removing 500 yards and replacing it with 500 yards? Are you now 1,000 yards, or are you just, it's like a...
No, because it's one or the other. And so if you, if you, if you're exact, yeah.
So you would pull the permit for the removal?
Well, it depends what, it depends what the threshold is.
Would you have two special, two permits?
No, but if the threshold's 1,000, you wouldn't pull a permit for either, because it's earth removal that involves 1,000 cubic yards or more of material, the filling of land that involves 1,000 cubic yards or more of material. So if you're bringing in 500 and taking out 500, neither of them hit the, the threshold. If the threshold was 500, then yes, you'd need, I mean, you could, I guess in theory, give them one permit that covers both, but you would need to be permitted to do it.
So theoretically, somebody can move 950 yards of material offsite and bring another 950 yards in.
In theory, yeah. As long as they, you know...
Or we could combine the two?
Well, I just want, wanna clarify things as much as possible, so...
Filling and, and/or removal of 1,000 cubic yards, and then that covers the whole thing.
You have to be careful how we write that, though, because you say filling or removal. I guess you could say, or any combination of the two.
Right.
Is the removal and the fill, you know...
I mean, there's a lot of exemptions, so that, that scenario coming up, not covered under the, one of the exemptions would be...
But, and I guess then the question is, is the removal of 500 and the fill of 500 an equivalent disturbance to the removal of 1,000? Are you, is, do they have the same concerns, or, or not? And, and I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily have a good answer to it, it just, are we, why are we capturing filling and removal, that total 1,000 cubic yards, if you were doing one activity, it wouldn't be captured? Is, is there, is there something about that removal and then refilling that should require some sort of review and, and, and capture?
I guess after hearing all the discussions and conversations about this, I'm wondering, is, is it possible that we write the, the bylaw and then have, and, and, and make it so that it can be reviewed case by case, so that if somebody comes, an applicant comes, and we're like, "No, this doesn't, this doesn't meet what we were trying to regulate"?
Their waiver process?
Right.
I don't think so, and I think that...
Because I know the second we put the law on, somebody's gonna come in with something that we didn't realize.
Pretty much, yeah. I, I don't disagree, but I don't think that you can say, "Well, if you wanna fill or remove, you have to come talk to us and see if that's, if we're gonna require you to get a permit."
Well, like the...
Well, if it totals 1,000 yards...
The treatments, the treatment bed for the Cortland Circle development, the 15,000 gallons a day, that's gotta be, that's gotta meet this.
I, so what you're saying is...
That's not something we would wanna pull.
Not every removal, you're saying combined removal and fill you want.
I'm saying that I wanna review the applicants for the license, for the, whatever it is, on a case by case, and have the ability to say this doesn't, this may meet the letter of the law, but not the intent, and we don't think that you should need to have a permit for this. Is that out of, out of left field?
I don't...
That would be outside of the exemptions.
I think you have to have a threshold that triggers the permit, or else people aren't gonna pass it. It's gonna be like the noise ordinance, everyone's gonna be scared that, "Well, what if I wanna plant my garden? Are you gonna make me come in and see you before I, before I go and order my loam to, to bring it in?"
Right, I guess what I'm saying, Adam, is that I wanna set, I wanna set a lower threshold than 1,000 cubic yard, if, if I wanted this out.
Okay. It sounded to me like you wanted to go without a threshold and just have everybody come in and review it case by case.
I want people to be comfortable with the threshold we set, and, and, and I think that that would add more comfort.
And I think what Paula had suggested was 500, because she was not comfortable with 1,000. And she felt 500 was a better compromise, because currently it's 10.
Well, a 50x jump of what we currently have is...
Better than 100x, I mean, it's a...
I would think it's more reasonable, I would think.
I'd be careful with that argument, because I'm not working in the building inspector's office, but I can almost guarantee you that the 10 isn't respected. In other words, the... So, you know, I, I hear the talk of, "Oh, well, 10 yards, and now we're 50x." Well, we're 50x really nothing, honestly, because we haven't been enforcing earth removal permits, we, I mean, none of it's been in place, so I think we just look at this with a fresh set of eyes and say, "Okay, let's come up with something reasonable." And my thought process on the amount of yards is relative to the amount of work that they're gonna need to do. I mean, there's a fair amount of engineering involved in all of this, to go out and do deep hole tests and perk tests and confirm that there aren't hydrox soils on the property, and locate all the bounds and topos and all this type of stuff, and, you know, I just, I think we need to be careful of setting a limit that's so restrictive that people aren't gonna be able to do what they wanna do in their own yards. And I don't look at the earth removal permit process as being the only thing that defends the public and the town against issues with moving earth. I mean, we have the Wetlands Protection Act, we have Title V, and so, you know, all the building codes, so there's a lot of stuff already in place that helps manage that, and that's why I don't think earth removal has really been a problem in town, because you've got all that other stuff going on, so.
Well, at, at the end of the day, earth removal is always gonna open, open, open up the avenue, the potential for stormwater runoff, for leaching out of fines, for the loss of quality topsoil. Those three things, that's coming from stormwater. The, the low 10 cubic yards that we've got now is not only laughed at, but it's not enforced.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I would think that 500 cubic yards would not be laughed at, it wouldn't be unreasonable, but with the ability to, um, say no, that this isn't what we're looking for, I'm, and again, the, the boards always change, so intent is, is a moving target as well, I suppose. So what, what would you say, Adam, would be the, what we were looking for, a waiver ability, or what, what kind of mechanism?
Well, the, the requirements within the regs are where the engineering and all that stuff really comes in, and there is a provision in the regs that allows you to waive portions that you feel are appropriate based on the situation. So if you...
Same as site plan approval, basically.
Correct.
This is basically site plan approval for earth removal.
For earth removal. It's, it's a very, it's, it's similar. I think that the requirements of what goes into it are slightly different, because we're looking at earth removal, not just site plan, but the, it's a, it's a two-tier approval pro, and not a two-tier approval process, it's a two-tier regulatory process, the bylaw, that outlines the basics of it, and then the regulations do all the detailed nitty-gritty stuff, because as you do it, if you find that the regulations were cumbersome, or you waive the same provision for every applicant, then you hold a public hearing and you remove that provision, or if you find that every applicant, you're fighting with them for something, you insert a provision that requires that they submit that as part of their application.
So the number, the cubic yardage, is gonna be in the bylaw?
Correct.
And then how we handle it is gonna be in the regs? So, basically, it seems like the, well, we got a couple issues, but the, the biggest issue I see is, is the number dialing in. Had you identified further? Well, you've only gotten one set of comments, so...
And, and Paula's comments revolved for the most, I mean, there were a couple of...
Are farming activities exempt from this?
It's coming in the general bylaw, right?
Yes, it'll be a general bylaw.
No, farming activities are exempt from zoning.
So, but moving earth within a property is not earth removal?
No, but I'm saying if the farmer's got three feet of loam and he wants to scrape off a foot and still make it, it can still be, because that's what they did in Groton for their baseball fields right in the center. They came in, scraped off, because they had feet of loam, they scraped it off, sold it off, and then just redid them.
Well, I mean...
But they, but they did haul the loam off property and...
That would be a, that would be a conversion, and then it would no longer be a farm.
No, no, I'm not saying they're gonna turn the farm into baseball fields.
He's saying if a farmer has three feet of loam and he wants to give...
You know, a 20-acre parcel with three acres, with three feet of loam, and they wanna scrape off a foot of loam and sell it, and then replant the field, because they still have viable soil.
I mean, I would expect that that would fall under this, because it's, it's removing earth in a quantity that triggers it, and now you could look at it and say, "We're okay with that, and we don't think you need to do this, this, and this," because we know...
And we could waive all the engineering and all that.
Correct. I mean, I think you'd probably want him to provide you with something that proves that he's taking off this foot and has this other, you know, this other loam underneath it, and he has this kind of separation that you want, but I don't think it needs to be full-blown.
Okay.
In the same way as someone who's like, "Oh, you see that drumlin over there? I wanna make it flat, because it's all gravel and it's gonna make me a lot of money."
No, the offset to groundwater is in the regs.
Correct.
Correct. So if, throughout this process, we find that there's an issue there, I just, I understand the offset in terms of protecting groundwater, the water supply and so on, but I also feel like a fair amount of ground is very close to the water table.
Yeah.
So how do you manage that situation?
Well, maybe it's not earth-removable. And again, that's, and that depends on the situation, I think.
And so, and I'm just thinking out loud here, but say you have a property that is very close to the water table, high watermarks, 12 inches. You can't fill that property either now, correct?
No, you can't.
No, you can't, because you'd be creating a, a greater separation.
But as far as, you couldn't use that for Title V, because it has to be naturally occurring?
Yep.
Now, would the regs allow somebody to strip off all the topsoil, fill it, and put the topsoil back?
I don't see why not.
Because technically, as part of that process, you're reducing your depth to groundwater.
At one point, yeah.
And then they get halfway through, they strip the topsoil, and then they don't fill it and put it back.
Yeah, that would be...
I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here.
Yeah, and I think, I think if it was, I mean, that kinda comes down to fill, though, in some ways. I know it's removal, because you're stripping the topsoil, but chances are, if you were gonna strip it to put it back, you wouldn't be taking it offsite.
Right.
So that would qualify under the moving earth on-site exemption. And then when you fill, you're filling over 18 inches to raise, and then you, you're just putting the, the loam back onto the site. I, I think it probably depends on the situation, I think it depends on how the board wants to condition it and, and what...
But in terms of the bylaw, I think it's probably streamlined enough that we could get this to town meeting.
And, and that's, and then, and between now, then, and, and over the winter, final, dial in the regs, so that, that when it comes time, you have it, it ready to go. The only, the only question is, do you wanna go to five years with three-year extensions, or do you wanna stay three years with two-year extensions?
Wouldn't it make sense for them to be, not modular, but like, three-year extensions for a six-year permit? Like halfway through? Does it make much difference at first, there's three, and then there's two, and then expires?
Well, that's, they're, they're not held to a single extension.
So they can just keep going two, two, two indefinitely?
Yeah, I mean, well, now it's five and two. I mean, Keating has permits they've had for 50 years, still.
And they do renew them every two years?
They renew them every year.
Every year? I thought you said it was five and two.
Well, this is three and, three and two in, in the draft that I put forward.
And do these need to be acted upon?
What need to be acted upon?
So if they got a permit, so you said Keating's, have they acted on all those permits over the 50 years, or they just got raw land that's just sitting there, that they just keep renewing the permit?
There is a, there is a requirement that they remove a minimum of 10 yards, so they were removing 10 yards from a majority of, they, they removed 10 yards from each of their properties at least, every year.
So if the number goes to 1,000, is that gonna be the minimum requirement?
Three scoops?
I, it may be, and I think in the regs...
My only concern...
I don't think it says you have to remove to the threshold, I think it says they need to be active. I guess active is, you know, a relative term, and...
I'm not sure why we'd want to require them to act on it. I mean, there's all kinds of permits that people get that...
True.
But they aren't indefinite. Well, I guess I mean...
This isn't indefinite, it's got a, well, currently it's got a one and three?
It's a three and two.
Three and two? It's, it's, it's gotta be reviewed and renewed every two or three years.
Well, my thought process would be that the renewal triggers inspection and, I mean...
Yeah, the renewal would certainly trigger all of that.
And my thought process is this would be just like site plan review, in that if the permit's coming up for renewal, I would hope that we'd reach out to our engineer and say, "Would you have a look at this?"
Well, the building inspector has been doing it, and over the last two years, the inspector we had has done a, a good job of working with the, the permit holders to really dial in what was there, and I think that having been involved in that process, our new inspector will be able to, to carry on with that.
So I would say, in my mind, I'd just assume, leave it at three and two.
And, you know, to, to Greg's point, I mean, we could do annual inspections.
I think the shorter, I mean...
If it's three and two, I might say it's not really something that, I would've suggested semi-annual, if you wanted to go to five and three, and then you'd get one inspection, two inspection, then you'd get a reinspection on the renewal.
Right.
And then, so it'd be like every other year?
So long as, yeah, so long as it's biannual, that somebody's out there just taking a look, then that would be okay.
I mean, even on the three-year, I don't think that they're gonna...
Yeah.
I've been to Keating's every, every year for the past three years, and not a whole lot's changed, surprisingly.
Right, right.
The hole's a little bit deeper on, on the Lancaster side, but the, the rest of their operation is, has stayed pretty consistent. So, you three are in favor of three and two?
Yep.
Okay.
Which leaves it unchanged.
Correct, and then it just gets to the...
Number.
Volume. And if you think that we can finish this on the 7th, I can put the placeholder on, and we can confirm volumes on the 7th, if, if that's what you want, or you can do it tonight, it's up to...
I'm okay with that.
I'm not good with the 1,000, too. I know Paula was for 500, so I don't wanna, I wanna point that out for the record, unless she sent you any, unless she sent you any information, otherwise...
She is not, and she was, she was pretty firm on, she felt 500 was, was a more appropriate...
That's why I wanted to state it for the record.
Did she give you any indication on her attendance at the next meet? Oh, the 7th is one we're just getting to.
We don't know. And again, I can send this over with the note that there may be a change prior to, and you can always, as the petitioner, make a change in your motion on town meeting floor.
So then we could actually leave it up to the town body?
Well, no.
If they accepted the motion, then yes.
Ultimately, it's up to the town body, and...
But I mean, the number...
But it's a lot cleaner.
The number selection could be up to the town body, because if you make a motion to make it bigger, if it's... Because if you make a motion to make it bigger, if it's small, or if you make a motion to make it smaller if it's big, then you've effectively let the non-existent audience here attend via the town meeting.
True.
Right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
You're in favor of 500?
I honestly haven't really given it a lot of thought. I, I just, I just know that 10 is ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure. Well, and I just did the quick math. If you had a half an acre and you removed six inches of topsoil, it's 400 yards of material. So that's not a very big area. Six inches.
Half an acre, that's 100 by 200.
Yeah.
Sizable. I mean, that could, that could wreak havoc on stormwater.
That doesn't even trigger a stormwater permit, though.
I know it doesn't. But if you went three inches on an acre, it would.
Yeah.
So I mean.
And that's still, still only 400.
Yeah.
I mean, even 600, six inches.
It's the clearing, I mean, it's the clearing that triggers the stormwater, not the removal.
It's the disturbance.
It's dis, yeah.
I mean, you could clear-cut an acre and it would trigger stormwater.
Right, but once you start stumping it, that's it, so it's not like you're.
I don't know, you, you're okay with making the decision on the 7th?
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm just reading, see here.
And that's the only thing that, that still seems to be up in the air? Okay.
So in this.
I'm just confirming.
Oh, as far as I can tell.
Okay, so have another read over just in case, if anything.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I might be missing a page, draft two, it's just starting with six.
Draft two, just starting with six. No, you are missing a page.
Okay. It's like, that doesn't make, all right, thank you. All right, thank you. It's still the same, just starts at six.
Oh, I wonder if.
Just his homer, it's definite.
She copied a double-sided, one, single-sided, maybe?
Mine starts with one.
Well, I just have definitions, and then all of a sudden, draft two, it just jumps to six.
It's double-sided.
Mine isn't.
Well, this is because this is mine that I printed.
Oh.
Oh. And I had probably given Marjorie a double-sided copy, because I print almost everything double-sided other than documents that get recorded.
Okay.
So the electronic version is only one-sided?
I'll send it, I did send it out, I'll send it out again. Okay.
So I think in the spirit of inclusivity that, we should, we should leave it up to a tiebreaker.
Well, we get a tiebreaker on the first.
About 750 yards.
Point three? Okay, and that will give a chance for someone other than one commenter to submit comments to you. I'm guilty.
Well, I make my comments at meetings, so.
Yeah, me, well, that's true, that's true.
Better venue for me.
All right, are we good with that? Are we good with that, that topic, earth removal?
So October 7th, hopefully we'll have a new member.
October 2nd. They get it sworn in on the 2nd, so.
It'd be good to potentially try to get them up to speed as quick as possible on some of this stuff.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, as, as far as the, all the, all the data and information on ongoing, current things on the agenda, yeah.
Watch hours of meetings.
Yeah, and give them a couple extra days to review it.
They can watch YouTube for the next three days in a row.
All right, so are we good on that, earth removal?
Yeah.
For now, yeah.
So we'll move on to Economic Development Committee?
So you should have the modified charge in your packet? That one is double-sided.
Yes, it is.
So this is reflecting the discussion that we had at the last meeting that, Greg, you weren't able to be at. The board talked about just tidying this up, and then the last thing the board wanted to talk about, when the board decided they wanted to leave the goals out, let the committee set their own goals, and then looking at the membership and trying to nail down what, what membership might look like.
Well, my recollection was that we were going to take out owns a business in Lunenburg just to try to put us in a better spot in terms of appointing people to the committee, because the way this is written, if they don't own a business in Lunenburg, they can't.
That strike, there should have gone all the way through.
I'm, I'm kind, I'm kind of not really in line with that, because a lot of these elected appointed positions, there is zero requirements. So we could have somebody that knows nothing, that wants nothing to do with it, that just wants to be on TV.
We can have that on this board.
We can.
Well, my, my only thought process there is if you have one member from AgCon, but don't require them to own a business.
Right.
Well, I mean.
That was my same thought.
I don't think, do all of the AgCon members own businesses?
It's already been discussed there, and, and if, if that was the case, we'd want to have an appointment ability, because the people that do own businesses are, say they don't have the ability to take on more volunteerism. So as much as, as much as I think that Agricultural Commission should be involved in this, I mean, there were, there were plenty of people in town that aren't appointed or elected to any position that would fit perfectly in this committee.
Okay, so what you're saying is you don't want a member from AgCon?
Oh, I, I want a member representative from AgCon, so I want AgCon to be able to make an appointment.
Okay.
Maybe one of the membership.
It doesn't have to be an AgCon member, just like anything else we do.
Exactly.
They can appoint whoever they like, but that's their appointee.
Okay. But this says.
That I agree with, that I, that I agree with.
But this says the member shall be appointed by the planning board.
Right.
Which is fine. We can recommend somebody, and you guys can recommend, the Agricultural Commission can make a recommendation to the planning board, just like we do for an appointment to this group, to the BOS. And they would actually make the appointment, instead of them, it'd be us. The planning board makes the appointment at the recommendation of the Agricultural Commission.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, the way this is written, one member from the AgCon.
Yeah, this would be a.
This would be a sitting member.
I understand that, and that's what I'm saying is, it should be changed to recommend, either a member or a recommendation.
Whoever the AgCon appoints. Whoever, it doesn't have to be an AgCon.
Just a recommendation from the AgCon. It could be a member, it could not be a member. I mean, there are so many.
And then if people wanted to do it that weren't AgCon missions, they would petition the AgCon.
Pretty much every.
So one member recommended by the Agricultural Commission. So is that something that should go all the way through? Or should it be members of these other bodies?
I think recommendations are good. I mean, because the, we've already experienced burnout in, in a lot of different ways. A lot of people get appointed or elected to one position, and then all of a sudden they've got three or four.
And that's fine, I just want to be sure that we're, that, I don't change it, and then we say, oh, no, we really want someone.
I think we should have a sitting planning board, or is it the planning board member going to sit on this, or are they, we just, are they just ad hoc?
Well, this is, this is ad hoc, this is like open space, right?
Uh, you, the planning board member would be ex officio.
No vote. Which is good, because I've got a horrible story about the initiation of the Agricultural Commission, once they got, they had no direction. So it would be good to have somebody at least with some understanding and time under their belt. Now, we, we now have a Lunenburg Business Association? Nope, Lunenburg Business.
And then it's essentially two members at large?
So one from AgCon, one from Open Space? So one member of Open Space, that we.
But I just changed that.
Changed all of them.
Per the, per the discussion.
Okay.
And then it would be two residents on, on the back, two residents essentially at large.
All right, so each of these, AgCon, Open Space, Con's Con would all be making a recommendation, recommendation to us, and we would be making the actual.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, one member, one resident, a business owner, and one resident, a property owner.
Yeah, I don't know that you want to, I guess you could. I thought you decided you didn't want a, a resident that was a business owner. Because that narrows the pool, too.
You just wanted to make it a business owner?
I thought it was just a resident. I thought it was two residents, and then a, and I think the ex officio member gets crossed out as non-resident and could be a local business owner, and that way it can be a, it could be resident or non-resident, since they're ex officio.
I'm not really sure what interest someone from outside town would have in participating in a committee like this.
They own a business in town, they're not a resident, but they own a business.
Okay, that's a good point, if, if they own a business in Lunenburg.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I was, I thought you had actually brought that up at the last time, that.
Yeah. One member.
I'll even call it a Lunenburg business owner rather than local.
It's, like you already did?
No, no. I thought that you asked to have this crossed out, because I think that is, is supposed to come all the way across. So it's one member that is a resident. Shall be appointed for two-year. One member that is a resident, and I know it says a property owner.
Why are we limiting the Sportus Lachman Planning Board in two one-year terms? If it's a three-year position for everybody else? Like, it would be kind of like.
To offset.
No, but I'm, even like, what is it, capital planning is three?
Well, I mean, this is ex officio, so you're not making decisions, so you could decide that after a year, you know, you guys want to rotate through, and every year, a different member does it to get different voices there.
I'm just looking for continuity. And again, if someone doesn't want to do it, they can always say, I don't want to do it anymore, and the board can appoint someone else.
And do you want to ta, before we get to that, I just want to, are we taking the property owner out? So it's two residents, not a resident and property owner?
I wouldn't even mind two resident business owners.
I don't think.
Just stick that out.
I, I don't think it's wrong to want a business owner. I think if you require that it's a business owner, you put yourself in a position where maybe you find a good candidate who doesn't fit. Maybe you have a resident who owns a business in Air, and they can't sit on it because it says a Lunenburg business owner. Maybe you have a resident who's, who doesn't own a business anymore, and you can't appoint them because they're not a business owner. So I, I think it's great to want that, I just don't want you to require it and then not be able to find that person.
But you don't want to make it as broad as resident at large?
Oh, I don't, I don't have a problem with resident at large. I think that's, it gives you a lot of latitude.
At some point, and again, I hate to say it, but beggars can't be choosers.
That's, that's what I mean, that's why, that's why I think taking the property owner out makes sense.
Resident at large, they could be a property owner, they could be a business owner.
Exactly.
I mean, it could be anybody. If we get qualified, more than one qualified, I mean, if we get one candidate.
And I would just say, one member that is.
Guess what, they're it.
Yeah, one member that is a resident.
But if we get two, at least we have the discretion to choose the one we feel is suited for the task, not just because they meet the requirements.
So you just brought something to my mind, is, is, this is an ex officio group, but one of the appointments is from another ex officio group, Open Space.
Uh, Open Space is ad hoc.
Ad hoc, okay.
And this wouldn't be an ad hoc group. You're, you're creating a charge, formally creating this under your umbrella.
Okay.
So if they made the decisions and voted, that would be what we would have to go with?
No, because they're just an advisory group.
Okay, all right, it's still advisory.
It's still advisory.
To me, ad hoc says advisory.
Yeah, they're, they're just not, I mean, yeah, they don't have any power on their own, their whole purpose is to, is to make recommendations and advisements.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and that's what I thought ad hoc was. So what is the difference between ad hoc, ex officio, and?
Ex officio is a non-voting member of a body.
Okay, that's, that's a member, that's not a group.
Correct. And then ad hoc is usually like a loosely organized affiliation. So Open Space, for a very long time, and I think even still, doesn't meet on a regular schedule, they meet as they're needed.
As needed, right.
And generally, the bulks, the bulk of their meetings revolve around the creation of the Open Space Plan and the.
Chapter lands.
The chapter lands. There's been some discussion about them formalizing, and I think that the group decided they didn't want to formalize any further.
For what?
Open Space.
For, to do what, though?
Just anything, to, to formalize and be on a regular meeting schedule and.
No, we're just kind of, whenever it's needed, yeah, kind of like the.
That would be the difference, where, oh, this would be a group that is meeting regularly and is, might not be monthly, it might be quarterly, but they're still going to meet on a regular basis.
I like that idea better, just because you don't have to have a meeting if there's no business to be taken care of, but at least, again, it's continuity. They know they're meeting, if anybody has any, you know, because like.
I think it's pretty.
Green Communities Task Force, we haven't met in six months.
I think it's pretty clear that there's a need for economic development in town. I'm not sure what the indicator would be, but, I mean, you're, you're suggesting that they meet.
That's a revolving door, though, economic development. I mean, I, I would like them to meet somewhat regularly, not just when they feel they're needed.
I think quarterly is probably a good schedule to start with.
Right.
Four times a year?
Yeah.
Because like I said, if they meet one quarter, and the next quarter, they don't have any business, it's a short meeting, but it's still there.
Well, that might change the, that might change what I said about the AgCon membership, because I was thinking that it would be a monthly thing.
Well, and then when you go to advertise the residents, they know they meet quarterly, not Wednesday next meeting? I don't know, at some point, you know, I mean, it's just.
I mean, even if they met every other month, I think that this type of group, in most instances, isn't going to have bi-weekly or monthly business. They're, they're looking at the totality of what's happening over periods of time, and how it affects longer-term strategies, and how, how the town shifts its direction in that realm, and they're just providing general recommendations. Now, maybe they find a project that they're like, we really want to dig into this.
Right.
And they say, we need to meet more regularly, and they can do that.
Like, say the sewer wants to expand, just hypothetically, the economic development may want to be a part of that and chime in, and meet more often than quarterly.
Or someone says, hey, we should explore expanding the commercial zone in this area, and they say, all right, let's look at the benefits of that, let's look at what other towns have done when they expanded, and what the impact was, that kind of stuff.
Again, my point is I want it to have continuity where people know, but I also don't want it to seem to be so burdensome that people are going to be like, I don't want to meet that often.
Mm-hmm.
And they can always, they set their own schedule, so they could always add meetings or meet more frequently if needed.
So we're still on the two non-existing government people? And whether or not to make them just members at large? I mean.
I think that's where you're going to get the most response.
Citizens at large?
Resident.
Yeah, I would consider them residents. Because you want somebody who at least.
Do we have to specify that, resident citizens at large?
And did we change that?
I would just say one member that is a resident.
Appointed members don't need to be registered voters, just, didn't they change that, or someone tried to change that?
I think they did.
Oh. So then Jim Lutensy could come back to the AgCon.
He's not a resident, though.
Oh, they, they made it a requirement to be an appoint.
I think you need to be a resident, you don't have to be a registered voter.
I'm fine with appointed people not being registered voters elected, I'd want them I'm fine with appointed people not being registered voters elected. I'd want them to be a registered voter to participate in the process.
All right. So I guess I wouldn't have a problem with both, with the last two positions being just general citizens at large. And however we need to state that if it's not plainly insinuated residents of Lunenburg.
I would just say one member that is a resident.
For both of them, just the same thing two times.
Yep. But they're appointed for different terms to start.
Two members.
One's two years, one's one year.
Two members that are residents, one appointed for two years, one appointed for one year, so that we don't keep bogging everything down with extra words. So I guess, why would some... Why would a non-resident business owner want to be part of this group and not be able to vote?
Maybe they feel they have important information to share.
But don't want to make a decision for the group?
Well, they're not a resident.
They might have a vested interest in the decision-making process, do they, if they're a business owner, for economic development?
This would fit right in with somebody that has a business here but does not live in town, and then there would be a direct impact. I mean, they would have experience in town.
I don't see why we require a non-resident.
I think it should just be a Lunenburg business owner.
Right.
And that way, because it's ex officio, it opens you up to having it be a non-resident if you find one. And if it's a resident, then try and get them to be one of the other members. But if you fill up all the other members and you have another business owner who wants to participate, they can be there and they can have their voice heard.
So non-resident local turns into Lunenburg?
Yeah, I would say Lunenburg business owner.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm not understanding number two. After the initial term, all members shall serve a three-year term.
So after everybody's term is up, all the terms flip to three years. So the terms outlined in the membership-
What? Should... Shall serve a-
Are intended to stagger the membership. So every year, you only have two members who potentially turn over. So the first two members are three-year terms, the third member is a two-year term, fourth member's a two-year term, and the fifth member's a one-year term. So after that first year-
Just because of the creation of the-
Correct, because it's a new committee and then that way you-
I get that now, yeah. It's like, if they're serving three years, why would they not serve another three years?
Yeah, so the initial term goes with the vacancies.
I understand it, yes.
No, and the planning board, not the town manager.
What are you changing? Four?
Four. Town manager doesn't care if they resign because you guys have appointed them, so.
Right. So you want to be part of this group, Adam? Villian?
He's on the list.
I'm on the list. I was on the initial list, so I just left myself on there.
Do you want to be?
Sure, why not?
Okay, well, I mean, if you didn't want to be, then you would be a detriment to this group.
No, I think this is something that falls well within what I do.
All right. Well, you usually tell us that you're Switzerland, so.
I am, and that doesn't mean I can't hear and moderate the discussion.
He also gives us his opinions at times, too.
Wait, well, I mean, Switzerland wouldn't typically say no, I don't want... Anyways, I just wanted to make sure that that was a good thing.
And I think number three, with the exemption of ex officio members, all duly appointed members should have voting power since they're already... I mean, it's kind of redundant, but-
Yeah, I mean, the ex officio-
But it lists one member from the select... They're just listed as members.
It's redundantly redundant, but... So number three doesn't even have to exist because people should understand what ex officio means, right? Or do we need to make a definition? Because we're making a definition for voting power, which is redundantly repeating the... In addition to regular members.
And then four, can we really require somebody to do anything like that?
Well, I think that the-
What if I don't want to write a letter and say I resigned?
I think the intent is that they haven't resigned unless they formally submitted the resignation.
Yeah, but the problem with that is that it opens up people that don't resign and don't show up to meetings. We can't fill the position.
That's correct. You can't. Same thing with the planning board. If Rhonda decided she wanted to just-
But there has to be a benchmark where if they miss... I mean, if I don't come to any meetings-
That would be charter. I mean, I guess you could-
I think it's 50%. I think if, according... Well, the old charter was 50%. If you miss 50% of the meetings, then you can be dismissed.
You can be.
Right.
You're not required to be.
If that falls under the charter, I just want to make sure that a seat just doesn't... Stays empty forever because somebody didn't send a letter of resignation.
Well, it would only be like three years at most. I think-
Trying to make sure that we get qualified candidates and people that want to do it, give them the ability to serve. And people that don't want to do it and don't show to meetings, just good riddance.
And it doesn't even say you have to write a formal letter. It just says you shall notify.
All right. Again, can we double-check in the charter? If it's covered in the charter, then I'm fine with it, but... And again, with the absence of numbers, with the absence of members at meetings, it just slows progress and slows work being done, so.
What'd you say?
I don't recall that being in the charter.
Were either one of you guys on the review?
I was on the review.
You were, okay.
Not in the new one. I remember it being in the old one because I looked.
I would have thought that would have been a big thing that they took out. So it may still be in there, but it wasn't anything that got discussed.
Well, it didn't get approved, so whatever they tried to take out didn't get taken out.
Some stuff did.
I thought the whole thing was shut down.
No, no.
It wasn't?
It passed. Like, it squeaked by, but it passed.
I must have been sleeping that hour.
Can't imagine why.
Anyways, I'd like to be there to check and see if we have a mechanism in place so that seats just don't sit empty if people don't come to meetings forever. Members shall get approval in the committee.
Isn't six kind of...
Meetings.
Well, I thought open meeting law spoke to that, no? To representations of members of groups, town body, groups?
What, are you looking at five or six?
Six. And I think it's just a friendly reminder, more than anything.
I mean, I would assume that that falls into the chair's responsibilities like any other board. Chair has the ability to speak on behalf of the board. Nobody else does really without permission of the board.
Well, by number six, then the chair doesn't have the ability to unless they ask permission from the group. Right?
I think the chair has the ability to speak... Is given more latitude to speak for the group, but a chair can't just stand up in a meeting and say, "Well, the planning board thinks this." If the board hasn't actually made some or whatever group, you know, the conservation commissioner, whomever thinks this, if there hasn't been a formal discussion and sort of vote or consensus that that's the-
If we had a discussion here at this meeting tonight, I would go to any meeting tomorrow and stand up and say I'm-
Correct, because you're representing a discussion that was actually had at an open meeting.
And you're presenting factual information.
Correct.
But this doesn't say anything about that. But it says shall get approval.
Well, and I don't know that we necessarily need to get this deep into things.
No.
That's what I mean. I think it's covered under-
This is what was written from the previous one and-
I think it's covered under whatever Robert's rules that we've tried to follow, like the chair speaks on behalf of the board. If the chair's not available, we pick somebody to go to the meetings.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't make stipulations here that-
So you want to take six out?
I do. How do you guys feel about it?
I don't think we need it.
I think we could lose half of this stuff in terms of-
Okay. I think there was a concurrence on getting rid of six.
Seven's fine, just like any other board.
Three members.
Three voting members.
Three voting members, yeah. Minimum three goals annually.
I don't think we need three goals annually.
I think, yeah, if we're going to let them set their own goals, they should pick the number and substance.
The committee shall establish-
Goals.
Goals annually?
Nope.
No?
They're not going to go there with no goals.
Let them do their thing.
You don't think that we should re... All right, so when Adam-
Their goal is to-
When Adam got here, he said that workshops are silly, but we still hold them. And I think he said something about goals. Didn't you? Maybe not.
I think I said I shouldn't set your goals for you.
Okay, that may have been it.
I think we spent a lot of time on setting goals that we never accomplished, basically.
I don't think the goals ever actually formally got set.
No, they didn't. And we spent hours and hours discussing them, so, I mean...
Do you feel the need to keep-
It's the drive of the individual members that tends to get things done.
So are we-
The horse to water.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
Do we want to remove the whole line of, all the way to goals from the committee? We want to delete committee shall establish a minimum of three goals annually?
Yeah, I don't think we need that.
Maybe you... No. So that's redundant, but probably a good thing to have as far as keeping minutes.
All right, so I'll doctor that up and put it on for the seventh.
Excellent.
So I just, one more time, want to voice my dissatisfaction with having removed the things that the town manager and the land use director had surmised was the public culmination of input through the many different things that we held. We held charrettes and open meetings and groups and discussions over two or three years.
I would say a year to 18 months.
Okay, half what I said. And my understanding of the consensus heard from the town was that ecotourism, agriculture were important and that... What else got removed? Promote ecotourism and agriculture were resounding things on every group that I was involved with.
Well, and I would say I don't think modifying the charge necessarily means that those things won't go through.
No, I understand that, but removing it removes the emphasis. And I also don't think that state agencies to retain businesses and... And we're cooperatively with businesses and state agencies to retain and promote current business in Lunenburg. That was the other thing that I regularly heard, was that we weren't necessarily interested in bringing in new business. We were more interested in improving the existing businesses. That was, I heard time and time again. But that's just, I guess, my opinion.
I don't-
We've agreed to remove them, so.
I just think economic development is everything and anything. Why limit it to existing businesses? Why not... Why exclude new businesses? I think we should encourage both.
Sure. I don't disagree with that, but having removed that, I mean, having that in there doesn't disclude that either. And just, it just seems to me like every time the town talks about the farming characteristics of Lunenburg, why they came here for the vistas and the farms and all that, just never makes it into any of this. It's all just stuff that's nice to hear and talk about. But that's my two cents. I'm done. So do we feel like we've wrapped that up?
Well, and I would just say along those lines, knowing that this committee has one member from AgCom, one member from Open Space, and one member from Conservation, I think that's where the spirit of agriculture and-
Oh, I agree.
Again, I think keeping those in there directs goals. You know, it kind of says, "These are the goals. Go with these three."
Perfect.
I mean, again, we're trying to build our tax base and-
All right, moving on. Solar bylaw.
Do you want to talk about that tonight?
I think we're better off waiting until we have a full board.
I don't think there's any-
No, I don't think we're in a rush.
...we're going to make it to town meeting with that.
No, we're shooting for spring for that anyways.
I don't have a problem skipping that one. It's okay, right?
I don't see why not.
Okay. It's black once it gets copied.
You're not technically required to.
I initial them anyway.
And why do I?
I don't know.
Stop passing them to me.
Predates my time.
Some committees, everybody's still something.
I was gonna say, I tried to stop and you guys wouldn't let me.
I think that was under different management.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for eight twenty-six nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for eight twenty-six nineteen, the Stormwater Public Hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Committee reports. Capital planning. We met last week sometime, and it was a fairly short meeting. Oh, it was Tuesday before the site walk. And we basically just got reorganized and re-updated on the criteria, the ranking criteria. And do you remember what it was called? The name? Anyways, this is criteria for ranking our capital projects, and we reviewed that and our vice chair updated us on it. And we didn't have any substantial discussion other than that. We expect to be getting things coming. I think our next meeting is scheduled for... I don't think I know, so... The 10th. No, that was when it was. Capital planning, the first. Okay, that's what I thought. So we will be... Capital planning will meet just before we meet with the Board of Selectmen on the first. Stormwater Task Force.
Did we meet since the last planning board meeting?
Yes, you reviewed and approved the annual report for the MS4.
Oh, that's right. We had town manager and EPW director and the two-member quorum, and we approved what Adam just said. The Agricultural Commission, we met last Thursday, and so we've gained over $2,000 from the farmers' market. We have over 30 vendors total this year. Applications for the full season and for per diems. We're typically having between 16 and 18... 16 and 20 vendors onsite every Sunday. We had 18 last Sunday, and it was a very slow day, but the morale and the market itself was very upbeat. So I would encourage everybody, we have three more market Sundays coming, the next three Sundays, until the 13th of October. Open Space ad hoc.
Open Space ad hoc is not met, but I believe they will be meeting in the near future, and that is initiated by the Land Acquisition Committee. We're going to be reaching out for recommendations from all the committees that are... May have an interest in that, including ourselves. That's why it's on the agenda.
I expect they'll be meeting about Howard Street as well.
Right, yep.
All right.
They haven't set a date yet, but-
Land Acquisition, I think, is Paula?
No, that's me.
Okay.
Land Acquisition- Um, Land Acquisition meets on the, we just had a meeting, I believe everybody received the summary. We had sent that out to, I believe, Board of Selectmen, Open Space. This is also what we would like to, just for general information for residents that are interested, so if anybody contacts any of us, feel free to forward this to them. It gives an overview of what the project is. Um, we're gonna be working on public outreach. We meet on the second of October, Wednesday, and then also again on the tenth of October, on a Thursday. But, uh, again, we'll be going to all the committees involved, Board of Selectmen, Open Space, Conscom, um, Finance. We'll need to get this on town meeting for this year to get the grant. So, I can't support it enough. I think the deal is pretty good for the town.
So, we'll need to have it on the November?
Pardon me?
The November town meeting?
Right, for us to get the grant, we would need, or grants, there's two separate grants. And one of the properties is for passive recreation, and the fifty acres on the other side of North Field Road can be used for active recreation. And just because we received the grants, or if we received the grants to purchase those properties, doesn't exclude us from looking into other grants to build fields or whatever we need to do to get active recreation on that parcel. And that's a parcel that used to be the opening for the old High Field Village, so that actually adds parking for the, we could initially, for short money, provide parking for the passive recreation part at the active recreation site across the street, because it's already mostly cleared, so. But, we have to acquire the properties first.
Wasn't there something about, um, no motorized vehicles on properties purchased with grant money? Or no recreational vehicles?
I, I think it's less about motorized vehicles for parking and more about use as like a, a riding area for off-road vehicles.
Right, I know, like, ski-mobils are exempt because they're, don't disturb land, because they ride on top of the snow as far as like conservation land and things like that. You can't ride dirt bikes, four-wheelers, et cetera, but...
So, they're exempt from being able to use the grant-funded purchase of a property?
Oh, I'm not sure if...
Because I thought that was, I thought that was an issue with, um...
Lane?
The lane.
I, I don't know, I haven't, my understanding was that the snow riders had done some work out on the lane and...
I understand.
I, I don't know that that was, I don't know about snow machines.
I can ask, I can reach out to Brandon, he should probably know that off the top of his head.
Now, is this, are you looking for the Selectmen to place this on the warrant? Has the... So, has this been forwarded for placement on the warrant?
I believe that's what our meeting on the...
Did you want me to...
The second, yeah, if...
Yeah, we have a representative from...
Yeah, I was going to public comment at the end who is gonna sponsor the warrant article, because I think it closes September thirtieth, and we don't meet again until after that. And so, we sort of did our work to submit our own articles we weren't even really prepared for last Tuesday, so I'm just surprised that we don't do more to prepare for our own warrants. But, who would submit this?
Believe, I mean, would we have the ability to submit it as a committee, the Land Acquisition?
You may, I mean, you're a charter...
I think it's any board committee, I mean, that's what our discussion is, is on the town meeting preparation timeframe and warrant articles.
When is your meeting?
Uh, October second.
So, that's after the warrant closes.
Oh.
So, you may want to...
So, we have a conundrum.
You may want to try and bump that up.
Okay, yes, I will contact Brandon immediately.
I mean, the other thing that you also need to work on is where that funding would come from as part of your warrant article.
Right, that's what we're working with FinCom for, because we have to come up with the full amount, but then we get the reimbursement within ninety days. Um, and it wouldn't go through, there's a, there's, it's, we're gonna submit it all as one warrant article instead of two. And then if we don't get the full grant, or close, we're discussing, because they come up $2,000 sure, it's, we're not gonna throw the project away over that, but if we don't basically get the full grant amount, then the proposal won't go through. So, even if the town says, yes, we wanna do this, we'll find out whether or not we get the grants. If we don't get the grants, it's not gonna happen.
Sure.
We're not on the hook for the money.
Green Communities.
Have not met, no update.
Montrose Regional Planning Commission. And MJTC?
We don't have an MJTC rep.
And is Paula MRPC?
She is MRPC, I believe.
Alright, so that rounds out our committee reports. Director's items?
So, two fifty Howard Street, we've been notified that they have received a qualified offer. They are a chapter sixty-one property. So, the town would have to act within a hundred and twenty days in order to exercise their right of first refusal to purchase the property for $60,000. The Board of Selectmen would like comments from the planning board on whether or not they feel this property has planning significance and whether they would like to exercise their right of first refusal or let it pass.
I'm sorry?
They have an article.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen have an article for this purchase?
And because there's a bona fide PNS, we're not handcuffed to doing it.
We're not, yeah, correct, because there's a bona fide offer.
Um, it does a but the parcel next to Arrow Estates that the town already owns, correct?
It would give us direct access to that from Howard Street without having to go through the roads.
I don't believe that it would. I think there's a rear parcel at the top of this that separates the current town-owned parcel from this parcel.
That's North Field.
Like a corner.
Do they, do they touch, oh, you have, I've looked at it a couple of times.
They both touch Howard Street.
They both touch Howard Street, but the town owns number ten, and number one prevents both of those parcels from accessing the town land.
Well, sort of, because two fifty, you've got the corner, so you theoretically could...
Yeah, I mean, I guess in...
No, that's a point, that's, no, it's not accessible.
So, it's...
Of any being that I know of.
I mean, you, you might be able to put a two-foot path through there, but then you get into the...
I ran into that issue. I was able to access town land through a, through a corner without crossing onto someone else's property who didn't want me on their property.
Did that include, include wetlands?
It did.
That did. That makes it even more difficult.
Well, that's just me walking through it, I'm not like...
You're gonna have muck boots on.
Yeah, right, oh, I did all that.
It's shown as perennial on the TIS. Excuse me.
So, is that a landlocked parcel, number one?
Yes. I believe there are some...
There's now one more, right?
Current issues with it, but, I mean, there's no guarantees. So, it would marry up with two sixty Howard Street, which the town does own.
So... Arrow Estates, the land, the forty acres.
Yes.
Is going to be deeded to the town.
Correct. At some point. Well, he would, he would have to start building it. And then, at the point that was outlined, and I, I don't remember the condition off the top of my head, it prescribed a time period, and it was, I think it was prior to the fiftieth occupancy permit. I mean, it was, it was about the halfway point of the project. But, the access isn't constructed until the roadway for Arrow Eight.
No, I'm just saying...
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but then we wouldn't have access until Arrow Eight was constructed, and that wouldn't be turned, that would have to be turned over prior to issuance of any, I think it's occupancy permit for the, the units in there. And that would give access back over to that same parcel.
And then, I just noticed in the other report that they're showing the connectivity going through this parcel.
Correct. Well, there's, I think they're showing going through the adjacent parcel.
But, the adjacent parcel doesn't connect. If this doesn't connect, then that doesn't connect.
I, they're showing, I think that's wildlife connectivity, not, you mean, you're talking about this with the yellow arrows on the...
Yeah.
I, and again, I, maybe Greg can speak to this, because he was, he was at those meetings, but I believe that that arrow is showing a wildlife corridor. Because if you, if you look at it, there is space between the town-owned land and where it shows it going through. So, I think it's just inferring that you would create a corridor that would allow for wildlife and habitat to come from the town for, or the state forest up at the Townsend border, all the way down through the conservation land owned on Chase Road. Because I don't think you could traverse from one to the other without crossing private property at some point.
I just thought that maybe they used a different term, but I, I know that open space has a whole set of criteria that they go through, and I thought one of them was connectivity, or maybe it was contiguous or something along those lines, so...
Yes, it's increasing the value of our current holdings of conservation or open-space land.
So, where this parcel doesn't provide that, does it?
Well, but we're not reviewing it from open space, you're, we would be reviewing it from, does it have planning value to the town?
Okay.
Is there, is there a benefit to the town taking this from a perspective of, of planning? This parcel, it's about fifteen acres, it could be two A and R lots, it could be a plan unit development, it could be a small subdivision. It's a fairly lengthy, narrow area. Could the board waive the length of the dead-end cul-de-sac there? Potentially, that would be up to the board in a conversation on what they might wanna see there and what they might get in exchange for that. But, you know, from a subdivision perspective, it would be probably six houses. You know, eighty thousand square feet each, that's two acres, that gives you twelve. Squeezing the road in, it's gonna take up some acreage, it's a weird size, so you're gonna, you're gonna lose some acreage. You don't know what's there for wetlands. And then...
Well, the mulpus goes right through it.
Well, correct, I mean, there, there are wetlands there. I don't, is it six lots, is it three lots? I, you know, without having it flagged, who knows?
Who's the purchaser that's listed in the...
Just looking at the...
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't...
Do we know if he's like a builder? It'd be helpful to know.
And I also made sure that it wasn't somebody that butts the, trying to make their house bigger, because that would be kinda rough to scoop it out from them.
Craig Bennett, that's the only one, two forty-four Howard.
I mean, he, he lists it, um, on the purchase and sale, he's claiming a single-family residence.
Okay.
But, I mean, from a planning perspective, I don't know how any of this really falls in our jurisdiction. I mean, if somebody wants a subdivided land, then we're here to interpret the subdivision, but we're not here to make a recommendation for or against subdivision, that's up to...
I, I think that the board could look at something and say, you know, that's three hundred acres, that's a significant impact on development of property. We feel that if the town were to take it for open space, it would assist in, in restricting our growth and negatively impacting our services. It's fifteen acres, I don't, I don't know that that same argument falls as it would on a large parcel. It's an odd-shaped parcel.
But, that's fifteen acres added to the other parcel, which would make it a total of...
Probably close to thirty.
Right.
I mean, I don't, I don't have the number.
And there's been a lot of discussion about town land and what we can do with the land we have. I mean, if it would lead to opportunity for something we needed, it would be beneficial.
If it's a similar situation to our buildings, we don't really...
Well, I mean, as a resident, I'd like to see the town acquire any land, but finances dictate what we, what's a good, a good value.
But then there's purchase cost and there's impact, there's the impact of taking off the tax rolls at the same time.
Well, seeing that it has a hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage, to me, doesn't make it highly developable.
No, as I said, I mean, if you did A and Rs, you're, you're getting two lots at, at the most.
No, and then plus you've got a thousand-foot driveway.
Yeah, or more.
Yeah. Yeah, it would make a good woodlot for somebody that burns wood. Anything more on that?
So, your recommendation or your comment to the Board of Selectmen is...
Oh, you need to break a recommendation?
For town meeting?
On whether or not you feel they should exercise their right of first refusal.
Right, but our recommendation is for town meeting?
No, your recommendation is for the Board of Selectmen, because, I mean, I believe, it sounds as if they've put the item on the warrant, I don't know if they've decided to endorse it or not. It's entirely possible that, okay, well, we have a hundred and twenty days to do it, we have a town meeting coming up, why wouldn't we put it on and have our discussion about it going forward? I mean, this was submitted... Yeah, exactly, so, so they've, they've put it on in the event that it comes back, that the majority of people advise them that we should take it.
Also, it, it's not unlikely that the new owner would put it back in the chapter, right?
It's entirely possible.
Does it, does it have to come out to be sold?
Yes.
No.
No? You can sell chapter to chapter?
No, and that's why it's triggering...
With family, you can, but...
It would, okay, so, as a family member, you can take a piece out and develop it, and it does not trigger the right of first refusal.
Right.
I could sell you a piece of chapter land, and you could buy it, and as long as you continue the use, the sale does not trigger the right of first refusal.
Okay.
Right.
The first refusal is when somebody is selling it.
That's what happened with the solar farm, because they didn't take it out of chapter, the change of use didn't...
As somebody already noticed, it says for a single-family residence instead of, instead of for agriculture.
Exactly, and that's what's triggering the...
That's what it says on the PNS, like, and once they own it, they can do whatever they want with it.
So, then we're gonna have fifteen acres that goes up by ninety percent in taxable value, basically. If this gets sold for sixty grand, rather than the town spending sixty grand on it.
Yeah, but then if, if they build a house, then you get the value of the house plus two acres, and the rest goes into backland.
Only if they, only if they make the arrangements for it, doesn't necessarily...
No, I mean, it becomes additional, from an assessing point of view, it's additional acreage. So, if you have a house that's in two-acre zoning and it has two acres, the tax bill on that versus a house that's in two-acre zoning with fifteen acres is gonna be...
Okay, so, so let me say, the, the assessor's does not give away tax, they do not, they, they actually, they actually fight people who try to put their land in chapter. They actually fight people who have had their land in chapter for thirty years.
But, additional acreage is, is valued differently than developable land. So, if this came straight out...
That's fine, but it's...
If this comes straight out of chapter as fifteen acres, it's, it's looked at as six or seven house lots.
That's fine, but it's still, it's still not chap...
No, it's, it's not, it's not the chapter value, I agree.
Okay, so, it would behoove the town financially to let this person buy this lot for $60,000? Is just, that's all I'm saying.
Well, theoretically, because, I mean, they could try to develop it and then put it back in, or if they develop it and then they put up a four-bedroom house and put two kids in the school system, the tax bill of the house is less than the burden on the schools.
It'll be right next to the hundred and twenty-two that are already going, so...
It's all hypothetical, but from a... It's all hypothetical, but from a planning perspective, I, I don't see any reason why we'd be against it or for it.
Well, I don't see any benefit. Do you? I mean, it's not going to allow us connectivity to anything that, that we don't already have.
Yeah.
And I don't think it really meets any of the criteria for the open spaces checklist. Right? No habitat. Well, there's, there's the wetland. There's the mulpus. So that, that does, I don't know about habitat or, um, any, anything else. There's no, oh, the agricultural significance of soils. Something.
But we were asked to review this by the town manager?
Well, the town manager's office sends it out in order to submit comment to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So open space hasn't reviewed it to.
They've received, no, but they've received it.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting yet.
I feel like they should be the ones commenting.
I kind of do too, but, I mean.
When do they?
Do we feel strongly one way or another? We don't have to make a recommendation. We could just say no recommendation. Right? However, however you guys want to handle it. I mean.
No recommendation is fine with me.
Yeah? Tanner?
No recommendation.
We get a motion?
I make a motion that we make no recommendation on behalf of the planning board for 250 Howard Street.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Stone Farm. Um, I was contacted by Powell Stone and Gravel. They will be finishing up the work at Stone Farm. Uh, so all it took was saying we were going to take his money and Mr. LaScotti contacted them and, uh, they are out finishing up the, the punch list of items. Um, so they'll have to have that done within the next.
That's actually RA Powell.
RA Powell, I apologize.
Two different companies.
Oh. They will, uh, they'll be out finishing that up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we will need an MJTC board representative. We've deferred this several times.
Not it.
That is in my wheelhouse, but I really just can't do it. I'm already on four things for town and I'm on MPO now.
Well, we'll carry it on to the.
Does it have to be a planning board member?
I don't believe so.
Katie, you want to? So you sure?
No, that's, uh, MPO. MJTC is 7 o'clock on a Thursday, I think. Then it's 7 o'clock on a Wednesday is.
So you're free.
And, uh, MJTC is a Wednesday.
I'll find something.
And I think they meet at the Doyle Center now, don't they?
They do. We need a building committee representative for the TC Passios project.
The rec papers is, I mean, I'm interested in it just because of the experience I had on the school building committee. Um, but I also think Tanner's qualified as well. So whatever direction the board takes, I'm more than happy to forward any comments to Tanner.
Or do you want to wait till we have a fifth member and?
Was, did Paula show any interest or?
Well, there's a new member coming on too.
She was interested, but would defer to me.
When would we need to do this for?
I mean, they've asked, oh, for a while.
Building.
If you want to wait for the fifth member and see if, uh, since they don't.
I'd like to nominate Tanner Cole for the, uh, Bill, uh, Building Committee.
Second?
I don't see why not.
There's no one else here.
Any discussion?
No.
Are there any of the nominations? Oh, do I do it that way?
Yeah.
So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so to this date, we have received one inquiry into the vacant position. Uh, I believe you all have a copy of her talent bank in your packet and I'm, I think I emailed it out to everybody too.
Yep.
Uh, so next Tuesday, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to review the single applicant.
That's the first already?
Wow.
Yeah. It's flying by. If there's anything, any information you would like from her, please let me know and I'll see if I can solicit a response.
I got her phone number right there. Just call.
Yeah. I think it'd be kind of inappropriate for the board members to just start calling her.
One at a time. Conference call. Actually, she's not a member yet, so no quorum issues.
Building Commissioner, uh, our new building commissioner started today. His name is Casey Burlingame. He comes from the town of Southbridge and worked in the city of Worcester prior to that and has been in the building trade for, uh, 20 some odd years. Uh, so far, so good.
First day went well.
Yeah.
Was he here for a meeting already?
Here, where, here where?
Like, he's going to be our advisor. So I was wondering if we could invite him in to introduce himself and.
You can certainly invite him. Uh, he's.
I mean, I know I can go in his office too, but.
Yeah. And, and he's not necessarily your advisor. He's the building commissioner.
Right, but we solicit his opinion. I mean, like, like we did.
He is a commissioner.
Right, but I mean, if we need a zoning interpretation, we ask him, but we don't have to accept it as.
Correct.
So he's, he's the building commissioner and the zoning officer?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
So he's doing both jobs now?
Well, both jobs are one job.
All right.
Unless the community has a bylaw that creates a separate zoning officer.
But we, do we, do we have a building commissioner, a building inspector now? Cause those, that's what they separated, right? When they created the zoning commissioner?
They never created a zoning commissioner. There's never been a zoning commissioner in Uniberg. They, at one point, we had a building commissioner and a building inspector.
Right.
Because the gentleman we hired wasn't certified.
Right.
So he was working a, a full schedule. The building commissioner was working a limited schedule because we're required to have a commissioner by law. And he was overseeing the work of the building inspector and shepherding him along through the process.
Okay.
In his resignation, we started looking for, again, both a building inspector or a building commissioner. We found a building commissioner, so it's been consolidated back into a singular.
Okay.
Uh, notices and communications have been scanned to you?
All right. So we, we added, uh, October 7?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're gonna meet on the 21st?
Hmm, the 26th. We meet the first, the 7th and the 26th.
The 26th is a Saturday.
Oh, should be a 28th. I expect everyone to come in costume.
Why is that what you're predicting is? It's 26th?
Uh, no, the 28th is just the, the meeting right before Halloween.
All right. So just as a reminder, November 12 is our special town meeting. So the joint meeting with the select board for our appointment and then October 7th, we were specifically meeting.
No, we're, we're just having a meeting.
Second meeting.
Okay.
So we'll go over earth removal. We'll go over butterfly lane.
So it, the impetus for that was, was the earth removal?
Correct.
For the warrant. Well.
I think it was just finishing stuff up for.
Yeah.
And the fact we're missing Columbus Day.
All right. Um, all right. Going items? Pretty much.
Same old stuff.
Skip, skip, skip. Master plan. We're still waiting on.
Correct. We have not heard on the grant.
Any idea what?
Uh, I can.
I can check in. I mean, I, my recollection was it was supposed to be in the fall, uh, but with the state that. Be in February?
It could fall. Correct.
Okay.
All right. Master plan is an important thing. Um, does anybody have anything specifically or non-specifically to say about it?
Not tonight.
Okay. Uh, is there any public comment?
Okay. Katie Adams, small public comment. Um, regarding the trees from earlier, I received a text from a resident tonight that was concerned that I didn't care about whether or not people in town had power. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that my comments about trees and liking trees and maybe taking trees over an occasional power outage for myself or personal comments. I certainly don't wish ill safety upon anybody, um, just because I like the scenic roadways and the trees. And so I just wanted to clear up that, um, I'm not wishing power outages upon people by advocating for trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will support your comments because this discussion tonight was about a scenic road by law, uh, was not about power outages. And we, I believe, uh, decided to protect the character and scenic value of our roads. In my mind, it was outside of that discussion. Um, I've received comments. I've, I've received people coming up to me with similar concerns and, and I think my responses were fairly similar to that. Um, any more further public comment? Uh, any board comment, concerns?
No.
No? Awesome.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.